A beautiful sunny day.
Good morning, City Manager.
Good morning, Mayor. Um, Stacy.
Yeah.
Can you start with roll call and then have the mayor kick this thing off?
Um, I would have the mayor kick it off. And then we'll do that.
Mayor? Yes.
All right, welcome to first day of the City Council Budget Retreat. Today is Thursday, April 27th, 2023. I am calling this meeting to order. Notices hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this budget retreat, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorneys on any item listed on the following agenda. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslam. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the pledging of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, interior of our republic, for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Matthews, would you read our mission statement?
I'd be honored to. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy, our land acknowledgement.
Yes, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as their home.
Thank you. City Manager, would you kick it off?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, would be glad to. In a minute, I will introduce our facilitator. But I'm going to start, uh, just with a couple of comments. First and foremost, uh, thank you to Proz for, uh, hosting this wonderful event. Uh, love the venue and, uh, really love the enhanced technology. So, uh, thanks. Also, uh, who is responsible for the lovely food that's in the back of the room?
That would be Sean Johnson.
Sean Johnson.
Doris Mensah.
And Doris, thank you. Much appreciated. Uh, and I want to thank you all for being here, um, for this important next step in our journey on the budgets, uh, process. We have retreated twice in February. Uh, good morning, Councilmember, and good morning, Vice Mayor. Um, we retreated again, uh, earlier this month, uh, to talk about capital projects. And here we are again. So by my count, this is the fourth retreat day. Tomorrow will be the fifth. That's a lot of, uh, retreating. Uh, it's been very productive. We're excited about, uh, what will be talked about over today and tomorrow, which leads me into my next, uh, accolade here. There has been a lot of effort, as there always is. There's been a lot of effort going into the preparation of this agenda and the presentation that will unveil here shortly. And a lot of staff have had involvement with this, but I'm going to single out Heidi Derry-Berry, uh, who always does the heavy lift in these things. Um, and this has come together quite well since our last retreat. Not really any downtime. We went from one agenda into another. Uh, but behind the scenes here, there's just a tremendous amount of work, uh, that goes into this. Um, and I know it's a team effort, uh, but Heidi Derry-Berry, we are grateful for all the work that you've done. Let's give Heidi a big round of applause. We know the rules, uh, of procedure here, the protocol, and there aren't really a lot of rules. We ask for engagement and dialogue. Uh, questions on the fly are fine. Uh, Katie will be looking online for Katie for questions. We'll all be doing our part to try to do that. And for those of you in the room who have questions or comments, uh, we simply ask that you make your way to the front in proximity to the microphones up here so, uh, everybody can hear you. Um, and I, on the subject of applause, I thought about this, uh, earlier today, you know, earlier this morning. We, we always are generous with, uh, recognizing those who are speaking. And I, I think it's a lot of fun and it's very gratifying to see that. I might suggest, uh, that as you look at our agenda, we have many, many presentation blocks, topic blocks. And I might suggest we get through each block and then show our appreciation at the end of that for all the folks who are presenting. Uh, that'll work out just fine. Uh, with that, I am going to introduce Katie Whitaker, uh, who, um, has been facilitating it during all of these retreats. I know we had Julie Day present on the projects earlier this month, but Katie's been involved from the outset, uh, and it's great to have you back. Uh, Katie does many things. Uh, she's a coach, she's a facilitator. Uh, she does a lot of leadership, uh, mentoring, and we are pleased to have her here. Uh, her task is to keep us on task and on time, uh, because we have a very busy agenda. Um, before I turn it over to Katie, uh, Stacy, we need to make an announcement about an executive session.
We do. Um, so Mayor and Council, you may have, um, seen an email that came through late yesterday evening. Um, we will be holding an executive session tomorrow afternoon immediately following the budget retreat. We'll remain here, um, at the Aquaplex, so it will be, um, convenient for you. Uh, but we'll need to convene into executive session, um, at the end of the meeting tomorrow. There will be some period of time where you can refresh it and be ready.
You're asking a lot of Council's time this week, and it's going to linger into next week as well. So thank you for your indulgence. Uh, all, uh, join me in welcoming Katie Whitaker to kick this thing off.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, that was great, thank you. So, as I mentioned, one of my jobs is timekeeper. And if you don't have an agenda in front of you, you do have a pile of them over here, uh, by Stacy. And, uh, you'll notice that there's a duration under each subject. And if you're presenting, you'll get a little reminder from me that you have five more minutes. And then you'll get a little reminder from me that you have one more minute, right? So that'll help keep you on time. And I will be managing the online comments, so feel free to always raise your hand and put in the comments. I'll make sure that we, um, make time for that. And then I respectfully request the ability to politely interrupt, which means I might have to let you know that there's an online comment or, uh, I might have to let you know that we're at, at time. And so, um, can I get the okay from everyone on council to politely interrupt? Thank you, Mayor Daggett says yes, goodness. Yeah, okay, so, uh, that, uh, that being said, one of my jobs is to keep the energy up today. Because budget is really interesting. And yet, we need to make sure that we're all keeping our energy up, right? So to, to, to go with that theme, I thought I would tell, start with a little story, a quick little story. So the other day, I download a budgeting app on my phone, right, to help me make sure I'm paying attention on my personal spending. So I download this budgeting app, it connects to my Vegas, starts like telling me everything I'm spending and where. And I realized, I'm spending a lot of money on Amazon movie rentals. Right? And this really helped me become aware of what was going on. And I realized that, you know, this was a problem. And so I did what anybody else would do in this situation. I deleted the app. All right, so we are going to get going, but before we do, there's a lot of leadership in the room. And when I say leadership, I'm reminding you that leadership is about your influence. Cause we all have influence, no matter what the scenario is when we're interacting with other people. And we can be intentional with the influence we want to have. So take a moment, everyone in the room, including all of our presenters, and ask yourself, what is the influence I want to have today? How do I want people to perceive me today? Take that moment. Now, turn to the person you're sitting next to and share it. You have about 10 seconds to share each. Go ahead, share the influence. Okay, go ahead and wrap up that conversation. Do I have a brave volunteer to share what their intentional influence is today? Ooh, I'm looking at Dan. Dan, do you want to share? No.
My word is competent.
Good. That's a good one. That's great. Anyone else? One, uh, one other person maybe from council willing to share their intentional influence? Yes? Yes, I see.
Focused.
Focused. And I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCarthy, you wanted to share?
Well, we were going to be darned early.
So efficient. Efficient.
Yeah, that's a better frame.
Yes. Okay, so without further ado, I'd like to invite, um, Heidi Derry-Berry up, and we will get started. Thank you, let's get up Heidi.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Heidi Derry-Berry, the city's Assistant Finance Director. So I think this was supposed to be key slides, but I'll go ahead and do those once we're getting started. So first, we just wanted to briefly talk about our retreat protocol. Um, we're just being high level today. This is a complex process with multiple components, as you know. I think, like, great, so this is our fourth time meeting. Um, we have a great amount of staff discussion to get here, where we are today, giving you the city manager's approach budget. Um, today's not problem solving, but rather building the framework. Um, we want to be inclusive, but succeed and stay on track. This is not really a case of what's. Just a really quick, um, agenda for day one. Um, I'll be presenting on the budget timeline and approach, and we'll talk about revenue updates, investing in the employee updates, new budget appropriations, and a very brief capital improvement program discussion today. Um, and then tomorrow, we have a very busy day. Um, we'll have our opening and overview. We'll talk about key community priorities, future planning, financial planning for future considerations, a valid measurement discussion, a discussion on our next steps for priority-based budget, and then the council parking lot adds, deletes, and discussion to wrap up the two-day retreat. So, as you can see, we have a lot to discuss in these two weeks. So, just very brief, I'll only be here for a couple of minutes just to talk about our timeline. Um, here is where we've been and where we're going. So we have dated through retreats in January, February, I didn't even put it in, oh yes, Aprils. We have two Aprils. Um, in between, we did have our division review meetings where we discussed for three weeks, um, the budget team with every division. And then when we wrap up here today, the next thing will be our adoption of budget in June. So we are approaching the finish line. Maybe everyone else will have some trouble. All right, here is our budget approach. So here is the approach that the budget team took this year, um, for what is in the recommended budget. So compensation benefits was communicated as one of the budget team's top priorities. And we have a nice little slide to remind the case by that because we feel that we did a really good job in that, uh, as you'll see here over the next couple of days. Um, also, looking at our key community priorities and objectives and what we recommended in the budget, we feel that we hit on that rather well, which you'll see. Um, basic services and operational needs, we have a lot of those. And we did a great job, we were able to approve a lot of them. But unfortunately, our goal was to move our one-time items to an ongoing. And this year, we were not able to do that. Um, our goal last year, or at the beginning of this year, was to transition 50% of our ongoing operational needs, sorry, excuse my voice, from one-time to ongoing, and we did not accomplish that at all. So sad case for that. Um, infrastructure needs, we did get to, um, make a lot of progress towards those items. And I hardly found them. Color of money, once again, I know you've heard this over and over, um, but you will see that throughout today's presentation as well. So you should have a, one of those panels in front of you, um, just remembering what that is. Just briefly remembering the special revenue enterprise debt service, capital project funds, you have restrictions on those. And the general fund is mostly unrestricted. And that's all I have for just a general kickoff. So thank you. And now I believe it's for the chatter.
Thanks, Heidi.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'm Rick Chatterman, the Service Director. See if you're ready. Welcome to the budget retreat. FY '24. I'm going to give you a, a brief update on revenues. Um, not a lot of changes since our last conversation in February. Uh, so this will be kind of high level. And I'll spend more time on, uh, the economic side of things. And real owners. Um, you know, as we did, yeah, a year ago, we talked about many of these topics. February, we talked about these kind of things. There's still lingering, there's still concerns on our economic conditions for the United States as well as local governments. Uh, one of the key things is recession considerations. Uh, this continues to be in the news. Economists keep talking about this, a potential recession, uh, that could be upon us. Um, last month, Federal Reserve, uh, put their predictions that sometime later this year, that there may be a recession, uh, recessionary period. That was kind of triggered by the bank turmoil that we saw, uh, last month, uh, with a couple banks collapsing. Uh, recent survey by Bloomberg, uh, shows responses about 65% risk of recession by, in this calendar year. Uh, National Association of Business Economics, uh, took greater than 50% chance of a recession this year. So you see a kind of a trend that this may be the year. Uh, George Hammond with the Elder College of Management at, uh, U of A, uh, gave a, a great presentation, a state finance committee, uh, talking about all the measures and all the things you watch, uh, while you look at what the future is going to be, recessionary concerns. While he didn't pick a date or time, he said, yes, it could be coming. But he's more looking into the slow growth. We're going to start slowing down in our growth patterns, uh, not really expanding much, uh, not much growth in the economy. Uh, and even Jim Rounds presented up here at NAU at the Economic Outlook. Uh, he says the projection is more likely next calendar year, early next calendar year. And he sees it more of a V shape, meaning, yes, we're going to see a dip, but we'll see us come back rather well, um, in short-term recession. But then slow growth, uh, moving out from that point. So, you know, we take this in the heart. We've already built those kinds of considerations into our revenue projections back when we were talking in February. So I didn't really make any adjustments related to conversations. It's similar conversations we're having. Uh, inflation and reserve rates, uh, still in the news, uh, still an issue, uh, throughout the United States. Uh, the Federal Reserve continues to use the concept of increasing borrowing rates to help curb inflation. Um, they had a rate increase last month. Um, and the rate has moved from near zero up to about 4.75, uh, just in the last year, year and a half or so. So fast-moving on that. Uh, and we are seeing some deceleration of inflation. Uh, that has been showing up that it's not at the same peaks as it was last year, uh, last fall and so forth. So, uh, it's good news. Uh, but I've, I've heard from several different economics professions saying it may not curve fast enough, but, you know, maybe by year end, right, 4%. Uh, not really meeting the target of 2%, but definitely much better than the 7%, 8% last year. Um, but still continuing in the inflation period. Uh, debt ceiling is also something to, to watch. Uh, lots of that news lately as, as both political parties start battling over what we do when the early June comes. Uh, that's what the Treasury marked as when we'll hit the debt ceiling, uh, for the federal government. But who's to say? I, you know, generally over time, they come to agreement and they extend the debt ceiling, or they make the adjustments necessary to a compromise. And we usually get a bipartisan agreement, uh, to raise limit. Just a historical note, uh, there has been more debt defaults in the, uh, life of the United States. Uh, 1862, 1830, 1933, 1968, and 1971. I'm not going to go into details of those, but you can research them. But we've done it before, uh, and we've come out with it as well. And the debt ceiling has been raised seven, eight times since 1960. So it's nothing new. It's something we deal with quite often at the federal level. Some of the impacts that, you know, we think about could happen if they do default and they decide not to raise that debt limit. Could have some local impacts. Uh, probably hitting smaller communities more than us, but it really has an impact on borrowing. Uh, the interest rate you may pay on your debts, being able to deliver projects, uh, it could slow down your resource coming in and make you not, uh, move projects forward. Uh, reducing the money going into the community, uh, could be a concern, uh, over time. The federal government may look to delay payments on things like entitlement bonds that was received. You know, so that can impact us and our cash flows, uh, throughout the city and our local government. So there are some concerns there, um, but I'm sure we're strong. We're, we're a good community and we'll definitely survive what they say. Uh, word for us has been in the news quite often, fuel prices, uh, those remain high. Um, two years ago, we were just above $2 a gallon. Now we're at $4.30 some cents on average here in Flagstaff. Uh, so we're still seeing that pinch of the pipes. Uh, the Warren Bridge chain, this train is still out there. Slight changes have improved. Uh, we're seeing some improvements. We're still seeing an arc shift in, in our, uh, services we deliver that it does still have longer lead times, uh, especially for the big capital projects, uh, wastewater systems and so forth. Uh, but it's getting, state legislative session is also something that always concerns me year after year. Uh, they are now into the budget talk conversations, and there's still a couple of concerns that, uh, one party's vision that could impact local revenues, uh, for the state. But we'll see how the, the two groups come together. Uh, the biggest concern is how they, they may look at the budget and do a tax cut for corporates, uh, which have, we have a material impact on the City of Flagstaff in a couple of years because we get our income tax information, FY '22 is what we're budgeting '24. So we have time to adjust, but that is definitely a consideration in the future. Good for this. We've got an economic recession plan. Uh, and we've used this before and it's been very, uh, well, uh, used in our organization. Uh, it really sets us up for those triggers in what we do as an organization. Should we see our revenues declining, uh, below our budget projections and, uh, the resource needs that we have in our organization to deliver services? So we, we set up, uh, five different levels. I'm not going to go into a lot of details here. Um, and you can definitely share the recession plan with council again if you'd like. Um, but it goes from what a 2% impact the general fund may be, uh, $1.4 million, how do we adjust that with some minor adjustments? All the way to a crisis mode. The significant major in, in crisis are something that will be in front of council to get your directions and say, yes, let's move into these measures as an organization. Uh, we'll check in with you before making those types of, of considerations. Uh, so with, with solid revenue estimating as well as a recession plan, I think we're in a good, very good place for next fiscal year. So for revenue updates, um, just briefly here, uh, the last update was in February. Really not a lot of changes here on the general fund. You'll see, uh, activity in February, March as a whole and all the categories were up 3% from, on the prior year. Um, that's kind of where we're projecting. We projected a couple more months of growth before we start potentially slowing down. Uh, there are some areas that we actually saw declines in the last three months. Uh, three areas actually saw a slight decline in revenues. Uh, this is our construction contracting. Uh, this one kind of makes sense. It was quite a winter. So construction probably slowed down during the month of January, which gets reported in February as well as February, March. Um, amusement slowed down slightly, and retail, uh, slowed down by about an average of 2% per month. So that's one of those things where consumer spending is something to watch. And this could be one of those, uh, things that point to what the economists are saying, a slowdown in our economy. Our projections show about a 1% to 2% decline in our next year's revenues. So I think we're well positioned, uh, next year. So that's why I recommend we stay with the current projection we provided in February. Um, just to remind you, snapshot of where we were in February in general sales tax. Um, same numbers as you saw back in February. Uh, we had some really good growth in this year, '21, '22, uh, which then continued about 4% growth in our estimates for '22, '23. So we really ramped up and we have a good baseline revenues now for the City of Flagstaff. Um, you'll see that our, our projections, uh, our budget for next year is actually about 9% over last year, this current year budget. Those two growth compiled and brought us up to a point where we're, we're projecting 9% increase in our sales tax revenues over last year's budget. However, you can see it's still slightly lower than what we're estimating at this year end. We've got this, uh, gap built in for this recession planning, but it puts us in a really good position. Uh, six of the 12 categories have seen a 4% to 10% growth, which is great, uh, for our organization. Um, so I think we're in a very good place with sales tax revenues. Uh, state shared revenues, uh, just briefly here. Uh, these are revenues shared by the states that are provided to cities. Uh, maintain the same numbers. Uh, they continue fairly strong over the last couple of months. So I, I feel the projections are still in line, uh, for what we're receiving. Um, the big note is the urban revenue share. Uh, you see that a $3 million increase, it's a big increase for next year. But that's because we know, uh, those are based on tax collections back in this year, '21, '22. Then they distribute them a year later, uh, in the next budget year. Uh, so those are very well-known numbers and definitely something we will achieve. Uh, the current concern there is the state legislated in the budget box. Uh, will this number continue to be maintained? Or will there be, uh, some impacts to our, uh, corporate income tax or individual income tax? So with that, done. Very brief, not a lot changed.
All right. That was a great question.
Yeah. Uh, before we, just one quick question, if I may. The recession plan that you, uh, highlighted, just for council's information, can you, uh, mention how far into that plan we went during the COVID recession?
Yeah, during the COVID recession, we, we jumped to the significant rather quickly. Yes, and it's a community really shut down and the economy changed. And we stayed there, uh, for, I don't remember how many months, but we, we stayed there quite a while. Uh, but the economy did pick back up. We saw that. It was a short-term shutdown, a big, uh, fall in revenues, but we regained those revenues over time, but we stayed there for quite a while.
Thanks, Rick.
Good job.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, we have Randy Tracy from HR coming to present next. Thank you, Randy.
Morning.
So everybody, good? It's good to see you. All right, well. Is that working?
There we go. Best thing in our employees. Something near and dear to me is what I do every day all day long, is invest in our employees. It's one of our greatest assets, as we know. Growing up in this business, I had a mentor used to call it the three Ps, physical plants, programs and people. Buildings don't do anything, programs don't do anything without great people. So our investment in, in the employees is a critical part of moving this organization forward in a positive way. So first thing we'll talk about is our staffing increases that we're proposing for this year. As the entire country starts moving out of the pandemic into the endemic and we're starting to come out, out of our houses and back into town, it creates activity, right? Everything starts to begin to activities and demands placed upon the organization as a whole. And so we're naturally going to see some growth needs to take care of those demands. There'll be a slide here in just a few minutes that actually shows that we're simply coming back to normal levels, staffing levels from 2008. There was a big dip during the recession. It went way, way down and we're actually, it'll look like we're adding quite a bit more this year, but the truth is we're just coming back to normal levels of 2008, 2009. So this was a quick breakdown. First several here are your internal services. HR, IT, uh, management services. We service everybody else. We service what works, police, fire. And so as those agencies, uh, divisions within the agency become more active and have more activity, puts more pressure on us to help serve them in our various capacities. Fire, ask for 1FTE, police aides, 3FTs, uh, housing planner, development, uh, community development as well. You'll see this throughout those adding a little bit of staff to try to help offset some of these demands. Water services, uh, they're, they're a, a big transition right now, so they're needing additional systems. Solid waste, another operator there. Sustainability as well, that's becoming a very robust division. Uh, airport maintenance worker, Flagstaff Housing Authority needs another housing navigator. And then continue to the general fund maintenance techs, mechanic, uh, two, transportation planner, park ranger. As you can see, this is fairly across the entire city. It's, as activities and demands and as the city grows, it places greater demands on us to provide those critical services. Reclassifications simply just means that, uh, the job has changed. Over the years, things have changed, more complexity, taken on more duties, taken on higher level duties. And so we do a reclassification to take them from their old position to the new position. And so in the general fund, there were nine positions that were reclassified, stormwater one, solid waste one, sustainability three, and airport one. This is that slide I was telling you about. So if you look at our 2008 levels, right, versus where we are today, we're simply just getting back to the staffing levels we were prior to the recession and pandemic. So I think that's an interesting, very telling chart, I think. This is showing that of our budget proposal, that 63% are personnel services. Uh, personnel is always going to be one of your number one investment. Uh, that is a big part of what we do in the city and in county and any other places. Salary is taking up a lot of room in our budget. So let's get into some retention trends for you. So separations are about the same as they were in 21, 22 for this last year. Retirements are about steady, knowledge is about the same thing every year. The voluntary terminations are the ones that we really focus in on because those are the ones that we can try to stop, right? Involuntary is the person maybe didn't cut, you know, didn't meet standards or whatever. Retirements are going to happen no matter what. That's what we're all working for, is right? It's the voluntary resignations, the ones that we need to focus on that we can actually stop, right? Why aren't they leaving? Why are they going somewhere? Uh, our turnover percentage is 24.76, which is just a smidge over what state local level rates are for under the Department of Labor. Tens plus 993. And then our vacancy rate is 15.5. That is a pretty high vacancy rate, but it fluctuates. When I first came here, it was 12. I've only been here in less than six months. So that's really hard one to pin down because it goes up and down like this right now. But that's where it was at a point in time. So we do look at exit interview surveys, right? So when people leave, we try hard to get them to come in the office, sit down with us, talk to us, what happened, how could we fix it, what can we do better? And Alan on my team does a great job of that. He's very thorough. Uh, and this is what we continue to hear is better pay and benefits are always number one. I've looked at our past data and it's been number one now for about five years. So it is the same this year, but you're going to see various things that happen, um, that people say they went to another job, housing costs a big deal, um, benefit costs a big deal, yes, man.
Um, there are two lines for better benefits and better pay, um, one at the top and then one toward the bottom.
We asked those as a general in the beginning of the, uh, interview and then we asked them to be very specific as it was it benefits or was it salary? And so they'll actually say benefits and, and salaries and then we'll say, well, which was it? Is it both or was it just one? And so we break those out. Um, so it's all over the board, but just as a, you know, for us to understand, we keep watching this, it's better benefits and salaries has always been number one for the last five years. Any other questions?
Just a question. So career advancement, um, listed at the top. Um, in Flagstaff, there's not a lot of professional, you know, job opportunities before the hospital, the city, university. So, um, do you have any sense of what, you know, do we need to invest more in, um, you know, advancement within and training for that or what does that really say?
Yeah, it does. Keeping in mind, we've got to put these in context as people move away. Cause I have another slide that actually tells a different story. When you look at the number of people that we promote within this city compared to where I've come from, it's very high, a lot of internal promotion. So it could be that it's an isolated situation. You work for a certain division and everybody's there 27 years and they don't have any place to move up to. But then you look at another division within the city and people are moving up quickly. So a lot of this is, is based on the individual that we talked to, of course. But yes, to your, to your question is I think we do need to invest in that. Because we have such a challenge getting people to come to Flagstaff, our best bet is to grow them internally the best that we can. And so we do that. I think we do a great job of that. These folks that, that answered that were probably in a situation where they didn't have advanced opportunities. And it could have just been they work in a small division and there's nowhere to go. But doesn't absolve us from doing that for sure. That's a great strategy.
Councilmember Harris has a question.
Sorry. Sorry, yeah.
Councilmember Harris has a question.
Okay.
Okay, so if we can't really, I mean, when, when I look at career advancement, sometimes the positions just aren't there right now. And the same would be for better benefits because of one thing or another. Uh, so it seems to me that better work environment, we can do something about that. That really is under our control. And so even if the benefits are kind of low compared to NNU or CCC and career advancement isn't there, but if my environment where I'm not stressed, you know, I'm not having a whole bunch of other stuff going on in my division, I feel comfortable in that environment. Um, I like my coworkers, we get along, all of those kinds of things, uh, that we can have some effect on, uh, makes a big difference. Cause I heard from younger people about things that happen in the workplace and they feel that because I'm new or I'm younger or I haven't been in my position as long, I can't say anything about it. So let me go and find another job where the environment is going to be better. So I said all of that to ask the question. What do we, what do we do about those kinds of things? How do we, how do we deal with environment, work environment? And I'm not talking about it's too cold in my building because you could put another sweater to a space heater, whatever. I'm talking about those personal kinds of things that happen and that people might be meaning because of.
I did that. That's an excellent question and it's something that we work on consistently in our office and with your shape. Two things, I want to answer your question, Congress, okay? Cause I think that's a great question. One, the first several slides is doing a piece of that. One of the number one things we see is people stressed out because they're overworked, all right? The pandemic really created a lot of stress. As you saw, we've been really low on staffing, trying to still provide the same quality and level of services with less staff. So the first part of this presentation was we need to get more staff so that we can get the pressure off of people. Cause that's in, in, in this line, right, where it says workplace, a lot of that is stress. It's not just having a conflict with the employee. It's I'm overstressed, I have to work, I'm looking at 150% now, I'm going to take a day off because there's nobody to relieve. So we, we have that piece that we can help, right? And the other piece is culture, right? Culture. And so we're, we're looking at, uh, bringing back our supervisor training program. I've been talking with Alan and my team about doing something really robust, bringing some contractors back in to do some, maybe some conflict resolution training with staff and some leadership to try to help alleviate some of that cultural issue. That's an ongoing thing everywhere I've ever been. It's constant, training your leaders to be good leaders and then training staff on their jobs, right? Which by the way, a big part of the budget and I'm so proud of it, is they're asking for a significant increase in citywide training. Because if, if your staff are not trained well and they, they get frustrated because they can't do the job, right? So we send them to training, we get them certifications, we get them that, we work on supervisory development and we give them more staff so they can take a day off. So I think all of these combinations, this culmination of approaches will help is where I think.
So let's go one step further.
Sure.
And this is, I can say this and sometimes your employees can't say it. What about our D E I, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, issues? Every organization has that. Do we address those issues in our work environment for our underrepresented population, whatever that might be? Do we have any training things in place for that? Because it's hard for me as a person of color in an all-white environment or organization to say a whole lot. You go, see where I'm going? Yeah, cause now I'm a troublemaker, you know, now I'm being whatever it is that I'm being. And so I just kind of go along to get along and until I can do better. And that's a part of growing our own. Cause if I'm not comfortable, I mean, I've been in this organization for however long, I'm not moving up and whenever looks at me, blah, 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 all of that stuff. So I just throw that out there. I'm not trying to put you on the spot or any of us, but those are the kinds of things that we need to talk about in organizations so that we can grow.
Absolutely. And that doesn't put us on the spot. That should be an angry part of what we do every day, right? All of us.
And including in charge.
And that is being echoed in our EAC group. Jerry may be able to speak to that. We recently, uh, formed a new training committee in that EAC specifically to have them provide that kind of training to the entire workforce. So people are talking about it and we're trying to create avenues and processes so that that type of training and awareness can permeate the entire staffing force. That just happened in the last, what, month, Jerry? So we are working towards that. Thank you for bringing that up. That's an important part and we shouldn't shy away from that. I don't shy away from it. It's part of our job, especially in HR is to make sure that we're representing all the people equally across the city, right? I need your comments. I appreciate those.
Oh, sorry. Just really quick, uh, does the city do stay interviews?
We're going to.
Okay.
I've been here a whole hot second, about six months maybe. And I can look at my backboard, one of the top things is stay interviews because one of the things that we identified, I identified when I came here, is we've got to do a better job of reselling our staff every day, right? Training supervisors and managers how to resell our job and the great benefits working in Flagstaff. And I don't think we've done that well. So I've got a team within my team working on that. We're doing research on staying, stay interviews and how that's going to look and how we're going to integrate. Thank you for bringing that up. That's something that goes on behind the doors that we don't talk about a lot because it hasn't come to fruition yet, but we are working on that right now. Good question. I next wanted to show them that some more exit interviewing information about our insurance, talking about what they think is excellent, right? And as we know, there's some concerns about some of our health insurance, vision, dental. We try to ask them questions about all of the programs across, and this is what we've captured. And so we know there's some areas that we need to work on and we continue to work on. And I know Shannon Anderson and all the people involved with, uh, our insurance carry are working on these daily. I go to those meetings and they are just rolling up their sleeve, trying to find ways to alleviate some of these costs. I know they are. So just give you kind of an overview of what folks think a little bit about our insurance, right? Any questions? Pretty, pretty straightforward. So trends on our salaries, again, we look at multiple different ways and we kind of pull them together to make a comprehensive kind of understanding of what people think. There's not any one chart tells the full story. This tells kind of a piece of the story. So when we look at these, their rate of pay on hires or, or average is never excellent. So folks feel from the day that they walk in the door that their average pay or less. So we look at that to try to see how we can maybe work on that process in the future. And then also how they move through their pay plan is a big one we look at, right? So they don't think that they moved through their pay plan very well. Now last year, as we mentioned in one of the previous ones, that you guys did a tremendous amount of work on compression last year, which is moving people through where they should be, right? Because what we find, and we still have pockets of it, we have to work on, is that a person who's been here 20, say 20 years, full education, completely competent, should be well past the midpoint. Sometimes they're not even to the midpoint. And so that makes them feel like they're not moving through their pay plan in the proper pace, right? So there's some of these things that we look at on a consistent basis that's very important. Equitability of pay, and that's something I've been working with Shannon Anderson on, if we're going to do another, uh, pay equity product this year, making sure that females and males are making equal pay. We need to do that on a periodic basis to make sure that we vet out inequities. So, question. Here's some interesting data. So our recruitment positions, this is the one I was telling you earlier, look how many people we've internally promoted, right? Eighty-four people. That's a lot. That's a lot of people moving up and through the organization. So that's why I was saying is we kind of have to put that other data in context because from where I come from, that's a lot of internal promotions. So you are doing a good job of growing people internally, right? They didn't have a career opportunity, could have been an isolated incident, they're in a small department, they didn't have any opportunities to do that. Now here's something I think that is very important for all of us to understand is the declined offers have really significantly increased, all right? And I want to put this in context for you. We're working diligently. We've got teams out here trying to recruit. We got it on buses. I've got full-time recruiters. We're putting a ton of time in. We're putting a ton of time and money to try to get people to come here, only to have them decline the offer once they've gone through the interviews and the whole thing. And we broke it down for you so you can see. They had another offer, blah, blah, reason for, the one in twenty-one that was two, now there's ninety-eight declines, ninety-eight. Over the last year was fourteen, so that's a huge spike, right? Thirty-eight accepted another offer somewhere, couple of them accepted in another city position, which may just have to re-recruit. That's okay, they were at least here. Twenty declined due to salary. But we made our best offer, they'd say that's not enough, so they declined, right? And then you had twelve because of the lack of housing, you were trying to bring them in from the outside, they just could not find a place to live. And then you got twenty-six that are other reasons. Those are the reasons, my spouse got a job somewhere else, I can't take the job, my kid's gonna go to this college. So there's a lot of reasons that are not our fault that people declined. To decline because of the cost of benefits. So we ask them, when we offer the, offer the job, we say, you know, why are you declining? Would you like, would you please tell us? And they're honest with us usually, and say, your insurance is too high, or you just don't pay enough, or the cost of housing is just off the charts. So this is something that my office and I know leadership is gonna keep an eye on significantly, is this number of declines. I mean, we're putting a ton of effort to get on here, and then they won't take the job, isn't it?
Randy, since I've been here at Flagstaff, there is that talk about the issues with trailing spouse coming in. Can we partner with the Chamber or maybe other organizations? Because that has always been a challenge when recruiting in other, again, for professional jobs other than maybe hospitality. That a person is looking to move up here to take a position, and then their spouse, because they need to have a two-income household, there's not, you know, job opportunities here. Are we, wouldn't we do it to communicate that with other larger industries in town to say, hey, we've also got these positions? So if you're hiring, you know, if you're in accounting or in I T or whatever it is, are we doing any of that to communicate?
How do you, do you have any information here? Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, Heidi Hansen, Econ, I tell the director, um, so. So if, if the candidate lets us know that they're having a trailing spouse issue, we can definitely get them associated with the Chamber. Sometimes we even will share with the county. So we try to do our very best to help them find employment. Sometimes it's just, it's just desperately hard because of the fact that, again, we can't always match the salary or, or handle the housing situation for them. I will tell you, part of what we have been, been trying to do with, now I'm gonna be talking about this with our campaign, is I'm talking about the culture of the city. Because we might not be the highest-paid place to work, and of course, we're gonna have benefit issues, but we have an amazing state retirement. Is we talk about the culture of actually working here, and part of what the leadership team has done this year is create a strategic plan for the leadership team. And we are committed as a leadership team to not only recognize our own staff and all the great things that they're doing, then to help each other recognize our staffs, to do, do it organization-wide. So for instance, Brian Helman's recent retirement, the, the athletes, the love and all of that that they have shown someone like Brian tells the other people that are working at the airport. This is a really great organization to work in. So we're all committed to trying to continue to help with creating that culture. And it really has started with Frank Lipton, our city manager. He's, he's very much about the people, and you can see that with the merit increases, the market adjustments, things like that that we're implementing. So I mean, it's gotta start somewhere. I will tell you some of my own recruitments are part of that ninety-eight. It's very frustrating. You, you look like they're very interested and they wanna work for you, and then all of a sudden, they've decided they're gonna take that position closer to home. And we just have a housing problem, and that's part of it, but we're not the only city that has this. So again, the best thing we can do is to continue to brand ourselves and to talk about it, and the stories that we have, and one of our own divisions to share those. And that's how you can get, get solid people. But we definitely have to look at, at our, at the pay and all of that. We have to continue to look at that and create a sense of that, so city managers needs that. Uh, but yes, when we know about the trailing spouse, we try to help.
Question? Or a comment and a question? So, so, so let's look at it this way. So I have, I have a position at the senior level, okay? And it might be kind of hard getting someone to move here from somewhere else, but do we look at our whole workforce and kind of identify? Who do we think, or who has shown skills in those areas, and can we encourage them to apply for that position? And then what we do is we look at filling an entry-level position where we may have more success. Because either we're grabbing our interns from N A U, they're already here, they're already set up in an apartment, they already know what it's like to live here. And maybe pulling them into that kind of lower level or whatever. You know, sometimes looking at how we do things differently. And I say that because I would do that in my division when I worked at N A U. Is if we had a position like here, I would look at those folks in our office, and then we would try and encourage them, go ahead and apply for that position. Sometimes people, you know, don't, they're not feeling real comfortable themselves sometimes. Or they might think that, oh, they'll never hire me for, for that. But if we identify folks who are up and coming and encourage them to apply, not saying give them the job, I'm saying encourage them to apply and go through the process. And then backfill their position with more of an entry level, might give us more success. I don't know, you probably already do a lot of that, I know there are a lot of interns in the, in the city.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's a way of growing your own, cause like I said, they're already here.
Councilwoman Harris, we do all of that, and we all steal from each other. Vitality, and I can tell you it might have had a little something to do with it. We do all of that, we identify, give great employees, we encourage them to apply, we can't tell them they're gonna get the position. Today, Stacy Breckerman, our Grants Contracts and Work Management Director, she put out a, a need for our grant specialist, and it's an internal interview. So she's encouraging people that are already within the organization to apply because they're familiar with the organization, it might speed up the process. We, we do all of the above, but we're always looking for, for new and inventive ideas. If they happen, please share them with us. Hi, Chair.
I'm glad to be back to you.
Oh, I'm glad to be talking.
Love to hear from you. Heidi, I'm, I'm going back to you.
Yeah.
Sure, what's your opinion?
She's got a couple more slides in a minute.
So I have two questions, I'll take them one at a time. First is with those twenty-two numbers, how much of that is comparable across the landscape? I know that there's been hiring challenges in every sector, in every city in a way, for every possible reason. There seems to be a finicky nature to job market after COVID, uh, and I know that that's part of this. Uh, I'm giving you a, an opportunity to tag an excuse to this that's more global in nature. But just talk for a moment about how that spike is not isolated to Flagstaff, but part of the larger challenge? Or maybe it is isolated to Flagstaff?
Well, that's a, that's a great question, and that is a, a long conversation. The workforce has changed. I mean, let's just bottom off. After the pandemic, workforce has changed drastically because employees are much more finicky. They're driving wages, they still are, no matter what the rest of the economy is doing, it's still a strong work market, workplace market, and they're still driving wages. When they call, they're gonna automatically counter you at ten to fifteen percent, just because they know they can. That is still going on on a consistent basis, right? But it puts them in a place where they're still in charge, right? At least in their minds. So as long as that continues in our workplace, you're always gonna have people playing this one job against another. They call Flagstaff, what are you paying, sixty thousand? Well, I can get seventy over at Gore, or I can get this. That's still going on. So some of that does contribute to that, just the overall workforce. Most people come to us with multiple options. It's not like it used to be where they're excited to get this job because I've been looking for six months, now they all come with two or three job offers. So that's gonna happen, they're gonna pick one against the other. And I don't foresee that changing, to be honest with you, in the next year or two. It's the weirdest thing, because those that follow economics know that when the recession goes down, usually the workforce continues to go down with it. It hasn't, stayed strong. And I don't know how long it's gonna stay that way. I do think that some of this really is unique to Flagstaff, to be honest with you, to some degree. I'm not saying this is not happening everywhere, and if you looked at every company, their numbers probably ticked up quite a bit as well. But we face a couple of things that you may not face in other towns or the valley, is the housing issues here because they're so tough. And just the cost of living here is really high. And so, um, yes, to answer your question, I do believe some of that is systemic, but some of it also, I think, is, is unique to us as a whole.
So I think that's part of the contextual landscape of our discussion today, just want to keep that top of mind. My second question, might be a little more sensitive, but I encourage you to answer it in general terms if you don't feel comfortable getting specific. We've talked a little bit about culture, and I don't like to have delusions of grandeur or, um, get too self-centered in the world that I'm in. But I am curious about the culture of council, and what impact or trickle-down effect that has of the city ethos. You know, and this goes back to my very low priority fair item about evaluation techniques for council members and for people in our role. But, and I, I encourage you to answer this question too, Greg. And you don't have to get specific where you can, uh, but what is the impact of a city council and a mayor on the general attitude trickle-down within the city? Does, is it a measurable impact? Uh, is it something that can vary significantly from council to council? Or are there other factors that get in the way and kind of smooth that over and, and take away the noise?
Very deep question.
And I ask that partially out of a self-devaluated reflective attitude and atmosphere. If there's something council needs to be doing differently to help improve morale and, and retention rates, uh, I think that's a conversation we're having. And I would hope that that would be identified and brought to our attention.
Greg, if you would answer that question first.
Thank you for the question. I think in large part, it varies from council to council. And there is probably some trickle-down impact. I would say largely it's the culture of council as it supports staff. Uh, and it, you know, we're, we're seeing clearly that compensation is high on that list, but it goes beyond that frankly. It's just how council views staff and the council that is very supportive of staff. I, I think that does permeate through the organization. I don't want to represent, you know, what might appear to be flattery, that's not where I'm going with this. But this council and the previous council and the council before that have been very supportive of staff. There's been a pro-staff culture, and it's been evident. It's been evident in the budget process, it's been evident in approving, uh, the compensation plans that, that was rolled out, the merit-based structure that we'll be talking about more. The compression adjustments last year, market adjustments this year. There's a lot of things that have, I think, exemplified that support, but I'll take it a step further. Every Tuesday at the Dais, when you have presentations coming your way from all the staff, there's a lot of respect being demonstrated on both sides. I think there's a very healthy working relationship between council and staff, it's a very inclusive relationship. Uh, you have many people within the organization who are, you know, I get front row seats, so I get to observe it, observe this. They do not have any fear of standing up and presenting to you on some very nuanced and complicated issues. You have garnered that respect from staff, uh, and that is a cultural thing. So, um, trust me when I say it, it isn't always that healthy. I've been in other jurisdictions where that respect has not always been demonstrated, and, and it does permeate. And, and so I think we enjoy a very positive culture here with this council and, and the previous councils. And I think it's important that that is the, the case, it makes a big difference. Thanks for the question. Thank you.
Answer the question. And I echo that, this is my third council, I've worked with numerous capacities, he's exactly spot on. I think it's simpler than you might think, to be honest with you. A lot of how people see you, because we don't work with you day-to-day, it's how you treat them, it's when they're presenting before you, how they treat you. The fact that you support compensation packages like this tells them that you value. I echo exactly what Mr. Lipton has said, is that that's what kind of forms the, how people perceive you, at least in my office. Because we only hear goods and the bads, you know, never, never the deep stuff, just the top stuff. And all I've heard is positive things and seen positive things because of the way you guys interact with us. And there's such tremendous respect shown, how you even talk, even your tone to the staff, that they go up, they walk away with a very positive attitude. It's very, that's just my side from the H R perspective, but I agree a hundred percent.
Well, and I, I would hope that there's some sort of apparatus in place for any problems along those lines to be adequately specially addressed when they arise. But that's, that's a part of another conversation. That's all.
Questions? Well, I would say it's a two-way street. You know, I've worked, uh, in my career at three different companies, I've worked with some NGOs, and worked here. We have an amazing staff. I mean, I, I'm in my seventh year on council, and I spent six years on planning zoning, five years on water commission. The people I've worked with are excellent. I'll just give you a quick example. The other Tuesday, I asked a question, and when I got home after the meeting and looked at my emails at night, I already had to answer. You know, so, uh, the staff is very respectful of me anyway, and I assume all the other council members. And, uh, they deserve a lot of respect, and I'm just saying that wrong because I feel strongly about it. And then I'll get that right. There's something I did want to say, and council members that have been here for a while have heard this before. But I used to be a manager, and I worked in aerospace, and I figured out my job was very easy. Hire the best people, keep them happy, end of discussion. They do the rest. Anyway, I just want to thank our staff out loud, you guys do a great job, and my interactions have been ninety-nine point nine percent positive. There was a couple. I'm just kidding.
We'll take that. Can I offer up a comment? Thank you for that discussion, Vice Mayor, yeah. Good topic. Some takeaways as I see it from Randy's presentation, and I know we're not finished with it, but a lot of focus on, uh, the declined offers. That is the landscape we're in now, whether it's localized or globalized, or as Randy pointed out, maybe both. That is the narrative. When you go back, and you don't have to go back to the previous slide, but we saw vacancies is still hovering high, but it's better. It's better than what we reported a year ago this time. So we, we are, we, we're seeing some progress, incremental progress in filling in our vacancies. That's huge, uh, because as Randy noted, you know, and as Councilmember Harris brought up, the work in. the work environment is directly impacted by vacancies. Single out our emergency dispatch as an example. We have struggled for years to fill vacancies there. It's a high-stress job. It might be one of the highest-stress jobs we can point to in our organization. And it only becomes more stressful when you have vacancies because people are having to work extra and cover for the shortages. There's a high degree of training going into that work. So it's not like somebody from down the hall can come in and sit in. So these things all interconnect. As we see some incremental progress with filling our vacancies, we are also relying, to the previous question, on a lot of reclassifications and you saw those numbers. So we're being creative, doing things internally to help meet our needs at the organizational level. And then again, you go to the declined offers and it tells that story. We're still struggling to land candidates. I tell you, you know, every week we go through this. We expend all these energies and resources to recruit. And in the end, we find ourselves coming up short on getting people to accept offers. We hope that this number is much better next year when we have this discussion. But it does represent kind of the current thing. Last thing I'll point out here and turn it back to Randy. As you look at the top part of this graphic, there's a shocking number there. In 2020, we recruited and filled positions for 155 positions. That number almost doubled in 2021. And that number is greatly exceeded in 2022 by the positions filled. We are filling a lot of positions, which is another way of saying we've had a lot of issues with retention and retirement and people moving on. That has been the story in Flagstaff. But we think we're seeing progress. But that number, 349 positions filled, is remarkable. When you think about it, our workforce is slightly over 900 people, right? So that's
Over a third.
Yeah. Thank you.
And meanwhile, your office is driven.
What's that?
You go hard on it.
Then you deal with the flex. But I was saying the team did great here. Looking at this point, one thing that's the minutia, that's the nuances that don't get put on a piece of paper that I think is really going to help is that we're fully staffed at this executive leadership level. People come to work for leaders, tell me right now. It makes a big difference. When you have a ton of leadership openings at the highest level, you get a churn because there's not a lot of direction, there's not a lot of guidance at the division levels. Now all your division directors are filled. Now we're getting our VCM. I think that's going to make a huge difference in our retention levels. I'll give you an example. I've been here not even six months. We're fully staffed. We've already hired two of our two critical tops since I've been here. Not because of anything I did. It just creates a synergy in a division and people are attracted to it. So this is the things that you won't see on a chart, but that I just know after all these years being in this business, I think it's going to make a difference. I just wanted to mention. Any other questions? I know we're getting a little behind here. Our heart is beating away.
We just want to remind you that we're still doing recruitment efforts. We have our, we have our Cool Careers, Cool People, Cool Mountains campaign. And it isn't, it was never created so that we were going to instantly hire someone. It was to brand the city as a great place to work. So that's what we're doing. I will say I get a lot of people that reach out and tell me that they heard about us through this. They don't always remember to tell HR that they heard about us. And then I will tell you that we have the county and NAU and all of my predecessors that have shared that they're pretty jealous that we have such a vibrant campaign. We continue to do local advertising that you'll see it here and there. And then we're actually using it outward. We're using a digital group called Ad Taxi where it serves up to other states and other people that might have like come to our website. So that's a pretty nice thing to have. And quite honestly, with the experts in Discover Flagstaff, we're getting it for a lot cheaper than we normally would because they already have these contracts that they're using. And then recently, the HR did their first annual City of Flagstaff Job Fair. And Randy might be able to talk more about how that went. We also are, we did the marketing video. You've seen it before. We just need to use it. It's on the platform. So if you go to, if you want to apply for a job, you can look at the video. It's really cool. And then in that video, like you know, it's all of our employees. We use all of our employees that would volunteer to be in that video, which says a lot, right? About the culture. We're also working on the creation of an employer referral program. So you'll see more of that. We have where you can put this in your email signature. And Ralph Schmidt, I saw this somewhere else. I asked him, what happens is when it's in your email, it actually transitions. Cool people, Cool Careers, Cool People, Cool Mountains, Apply Now. And you can actually click on it to apply. So if you don't have it in your email signature, I'm not calling you out. Please do it because every little bit helps us with recruitment. And then last but not least, I know this isn't Wamy dot com mood here, but we have these amazing brochures now. They look very, very professional. And so when we have a specific job, like we do the city engineer or a library director or what have you, we've had it upgraded by Discover Flagstaff. And it tells the story of what environment you're going to be coming in and working at. So we're doing everything that we can think of. And quite honestly, what we're doing is, again, we're branding. It took the Convention and Visitor Bureau 40 years to brand the destination and we still do it today. So it's going to take us a lot longer to continue to brand the city of Flagstaff, but I think that we've done a great job the last two years.
So I've seen that in our Cool Careers, Cool People, Cool Mountains on internal emails. Where do we go to get that to grab it on the charts?
We'll send it to you. Yeah, we'll have it sent out to you. Appreciate you asking and participating. Any other questions? I'm going to turn it over to Randy.
Thank you so much. Yeah, our team is amazing. Our recruitment team partners with them and they, they absolutely are most creative, amazing minds. We might do the narrative, you know, what we say. We're like you guys, deal with what looks like is awesome. So good job for our team. So now we'll do some, just real quick summaries. Go back over, you've seen this data before, a couple of other retreats. So our merits, compensation benefits, this is our budget approach, our budget request for this year. The merits are already funded. We are going to be implementing Pay For Performance July 1st. Right now, everybody that has a passing evaluation gets the 3% flat rate. January, July 1st and beyond, it will be a 2% to 4% depending on the regular third evaluation. We've done adjustments to pay plans based on our market data. Minimum wage adjustments were based on Consumer Price Index this last time. As you know, the maintenance of our cost share for our benefit package for our employees. That's our approach. Recommendation for benefits is there's no change to any of the options. I might have mentioned this the last time, but I'll, worth repeating. The average health insurance cost is going up seven to eight percent per year, projected for the next five years. It's just going up as fast as we can. So there is going to have to be a slight increase to offset some of those costs. I know Shannon's done a fantastic job of working with our reserves and all that kind of stuff to try to keep that to its minimum. There is going to be a 6% increase to our buy-up plan, 5.5% to the base plan, and 5% for the hypothetical health plan. Do you want to say anything about that, Shannon, for the rest of this?
I think you've seen a similar model a few years back. The reason that it's different for each of the plans is the experience or claims that go along with each of those plans varies. And so we try to make sure that we're bringing the rates to an appropriate amount in order to support each of the plans, even though they're whole estate.
Thank you, Shannon. She just does so much work. I've watched her get in there and roll up her sleeves. I wonder if she'll be able to speak to that because she's just done tremendous amount of work towards that. So 100% on our base employee-only coverage is still the way it was. The person that's participating in our wellness program is going to be paid 100%. So we're encouraging wellness consistently to get people, keep our employees healthy, be proactive about that. 72% of the base family employee plus one plan. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Shannon? Is there anything you want to say about the benefits?
72%?
Yeah.
This actually was some terrific work done by Randy when she was helping out as the end partner, Dr. resources, and Jared Potashik, who's one of our chairs with EAC. Made a terrific job, something that we've been trying to address for years, which is bringing in the three tiers for the benefit plan without having an extraordinary increase for family as well as being able to make us very competitive in what we are performing for our employees. So really making our benefit package more attractive for those who are here as well as those who might be interested in coming to our organization. So I really applaud their efforts and they've accomplished something that's really terrific for our organization.
Thank you, Shannon. A lot of this great work was done before I got here, so I want to make sure to give credit where credit's due. Well, we're building on the things that they've done. We appreciate that.
Would you mind going back one slide? And I just want to invite a little more discussion on the pay-for-performance. And Shannon, this one might also go your way. I know there's been a team effort, but there's a lot to this implementation of pay-for-performance. As Randy mentioned, the 2% to 4% scale, which is going to be based on performance. So there's incentives to perform at a higher level. And it's very goal-based as well. So this accomplishments, achievement of goals. But what I'd like to invite some further discussion of is the training that is currently going on with our supervisors and leaders to ensure that this is a successful program. Shannon, I know you've had a lot of involvement in training. HR's been involved. There's been some very good things happening. Evaluation form has been streamlined, but I was wondering if you could give that a little bit of context.
Certainly. Randy and Alan have been at the helm of working with Lancaster Leadership. Katie is part of that organization and also helping us in this realm.
Shannon, you can be by the mic.
Yeah, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. Come on up.
So the pay-for-performance training, again, Randy and Alan have been working a lot with Katie as well as the rest of the staff there at Lancaster Leadership to create a series of training for all of our leaders, meaning those that conduct evaluations. So that we're talking about what does the rating scale mean? We're looking at that from an organizational perspective in order to create some more consistency. Something we heard that was really important for our employees years ago and we've continued to have those conversations again through our EAC. So that's been one of the focus. And then also Alan has recently sent out communication where that training will start also for employees so that they understand what the rating scale is going to look like and how the pay-for-performance system is going to work. It's important that both sides really understand what is pay-for-performance? What is two-rating mean? What is a four-rating? What is a five-rating mean? So that we're all on the same page. So that's really high level. A lot Randy told in more details, so you know he's really been involved in those conversations.
Yeah, this is something that happens daily. Alan either every day or other day, see where we're at on that because we have a deadline. We've got a July 1 deadline. How much of it's done? We're loading, uploading data every day because those have to go out to every person 60 days in advance. We're working with IT right now to make sure everybody has an email because there will be a lot of people who didn't have emails and it's all set up on email. So just a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes, everything.
So the pay-for-performance, is that, is there also a cost of living increase that goes in automatically every year and then the pay-for-performance is over the above? Or is that in replace of a cost of living?
Considering by understanding the question, the merit is really not a cost of living.
Right.
It's going on every, every year, 3%. This is replacing the merit. So the 3% that was happening every year at the anniversary date, right? Has been replaced July 1st with the
Do we also do a cost of living increase separate?
I could speak to that if I may. Council enacted a cost of living adjustment or COLA once during COVID early on. It was, it was the recession that Rick Carter was referring to. There was, if I recall, a 2% adjustment that year. I don't believe there's, there has been one since, but in a short while, while we will be talking about market adjustments, which aren't cost of living adjustments, but it's a little bit more akin to your question. That is something that will happen independently of merit or pay-for-performance. But this is a good question. I think the quick answer is we don't do the cost of living adjustments frequently.
So, question. This, this is a follow-up to Lloyd's question. I'm just trying to comment. This terminology is very confusing. Merit and pay-for-performance, they sound like the same thing. So I guess, are we doing merits and pay-for-performance?
No, I would
Or they alternates each other?
If I may, I see one as an evolution of the other. I think pay-for-performance is the next iteration of merit-based compensation. And it's a little bit more specific, as I mentioned, to performance and goal accomplishment. Merit, as it has been, as Randy noted, has been pretty much a 3% adjustment each year for most of our employees. And presumably, it is based upon your performance, but it would take a lot to not achieve that 3% merit increase. In other words, most people get it. As we evolve into pay-for-performance, it's going to be a little bit more specific to how you're performing. So that 2%, 3%, 4% compensation adjustment will hinge directly upon how you are evaluated and how you are achieving your goals as an employee. So does that make sense?
Yeah, let me say it back this straight. The so-called merit, almost all employees get the same thing. Unless there's some, you know, they're out of the ballpark
Yeah.
for one reason or the other. They're not doing the job. Where pay-for-performance, it's like, well, people that are excelling are going to get a bigger raise than those that are just getting by or those that are booting off. There aren't, but there might be. So, so that's what we're, are we doing, you're suggesting we do that this budget cycle?
Yeah, we are recommending it. It's in the budget that we, and this has always been the plan. In fact, we were actually going to roll this out a year ago, but it just took some time.
So are we going to phase out a so-called merit?
Yes, it will be pay-for-performance.
So it'll be entirely pay-for-performance?
Yes.
Which I'm trying to, I mean, when I was an employee in aerospace, that's how we just, you know, they give an average raise of 3%. Well, and then depending on your performance, you might get 1%, you might get 7%. So we're going to go to a system more like that, pays out merit.
We haven't talked about, we have one other pay plan in the organization, which is a step plan. Our public safety utilizes that in large part, so there's Yeah, it is a little bit different. So I just want to make that clarification. But most of our employee base will fall under this.
And then on some years, we might do, in addition to this, a cost of living for everybody.
Or a market adjustment, which is going to be a future topic here in a short while.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some other slides that we can get into that in just a second.
Okay.
See if there's consistent. So let me just kind of go through and then we'll stop on the market adjustment, which is an additional thing beyond the pay-for-performance. It's two different types of increases. So our merits for this particular fiscal year have already been budgeted through the five-year plan. And as it shows, we're transitioning from that to the pay-for-performance in July 1st. Okay? So instead of the 3% across the board, it's going to be the 2% to 4%. And then the step increases for our three-step plans, those are not done on the same type of formula. We work with the Uh, we work with individual departments to make sure that those step plans are, are healthy and that as people promote, there's not a lot of crossover and then it incentivizes them. So it's a totally different type of, of work on those step plans. But they are going to get an increase as well. Something that we've been talking about in the other retreats is that we're moving, and I want to be careful with the language here, it's not the minimum wage, it's the city of black staff starting wage for our agency is going to be moving to eighteen dollars now on July first, right? So this helps us be more competitive in the market. Folks out there making sixteen eighty currently, they come to work here, our minimum starting wage in our regular plans are going to be eighteen dollars now. So that created some compression, right? So we collapsed regular plan, regular grade four, moved that up to five, and then we pushed them all up just a little bit, so that creates compression between them. So we had to move those up just a smidge to keep some good, healthy, uh, distance between. Basically, in the real world, what that means is there's too much compression, you get a promotion and you only get a twenty cent raise because there's not enough room between those grades. You've got to keep those grades a little bit healthy so that there's enough distance. That in and of itself is going to cost about six hundred and ninety-one thousand to move zero four to zero twenty-five, which really captures, and I would say, most of our entry level positions, operators, all of that is in that, that grade. So the budget team did some fantastic work, by the way. They all worked so hard to make sure that these folks down here have a healthy, healthy plan to work through, and I just want to applaud them for that. Obviously, the temp plan is tied to that, right? So the temp plan is tied to a regular plan, and it's four T versus four R, top tier. So that had to be changed as well. So there was an impact to the entire temp plan, which is a part of that cost. The market adjustment. So we talked at length about a merit, right? Moving to a pay for performance, but completely aside from that, in addition to, we're doing, we're recommending a market adjustment as well. So what happens is a particular position in the market, let's just say firefighter, for example, is moving forward because everybody out there is raising prices, right? Abundant fire department's giving a dollar raise, a two dollar raise. And so we measured ourselves against that, and a lot of times we're lagging, right? So we have to give a, a boost beyond the merit. Got to do a little bit more. And so that's what this is, the market adjustment. We looked across the entire city and we landed on a three percent market adjustment on top of the pay for performance. So hypothetically, in the next part of the year, a person could get between six and seven percent. So if they got four percent, the superstar, plus they get, right, the market adjustment, they could potentially in this entire calendar year get up to seven percent, right? So does that make sense? Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to make a comment. I've been in, um, H R related, um, career for a long time with my financial career, and in the pay for performance for, you know, pretty much most of it in the banking career, we were doing that. And it seemed, uh, that it never, uh, really went away that employees, if they did their job as expected, they, you're doing everything right. In their mind, they would feel like they should get a bigger, you know, pay for performance increase instead of that understanding that if you're just doing the, the expected level and nothing above that, you're going to get the two percent. And so I just wanted to make that comment. I'm sure you already know that, being in H R, but it just, that was always, you know, I, I've had staffs of, you know, thirty-five employees, and that was always the conversation. Well, I do everything, you know, you don't have to tell me how, you know, what to do. I do everything on my tab. It's like, yes, I'm paying you that two percent is just doing that. And you could raise above that and you do over and above, you know, what you're expecting, then you're going to get a higher merit. Not merit, pay for performance, but it never went away. That misunderstanding never left.
Well, everybody's a hero in their own story, aren't they?
We are. We're awesome.
A comment if I may. Uh, did you have a hand up here?
No, I'm scratching.
Okay. See how trained we are? We're moving.
Which is we know.
Yeah. Let me tie a couple of things together, going back to the previous presentation and then what we're looking at now. In the previous presentation, we had a lot of discussion about recruitment efforts, how hard it is to land employees right now, uh, the, the number ninety-eight of declined offers. Remarkable, right? Um, uber competitive out there, uh, right now, uh, for employers, uh, trying to find employees. So you have the vacancy, you have difficulty with recruitment, you have difficulty, as we've seen, with retention. Um, the, all the vacancies that have been produced. And then you, you fast forward to this discussion, what are we doing about it? This is that. We are trying to stay competitive. That's exactly what a market adjustment is, is we are looking around, looking at our competitors and trying to figure out how we can, you know, on a level playing field to help our chances in recruiting and retaining, uh, our employees. So is, to your earlier question, council members, it's not really a cost of living adjustment, uh, but it is an adjustment and it's an across-the-board adjustment and it's one that is needed just to keep us competitive. Now, in a normal environment, we would do these market analyses about every three years, maybe, uh, three to five years. We did one three years ago. We cannot keep pace with how fast the market is adjusting right now. We simply cannot, we, we can do a study now and we would already be behind competitively by the time we see it come to, uh, fruition. That's how fast things are moving. Now, it should slow down, it always does, there's an ebb and flow to this, but right now, at this point in time, it's hard to keep pace, and that's what this is about. Thanks for letting me elaborate on that.
Yes, sir. Still moving fast enough that once we do a market study and then we come back to it, nine to a hundred and twenty days work starts to last. That's how fast it's moving. So whatever we do, it's, it's just trying to keep us keeping pace at this point. So I'm hoping that it slows down at some point because this is exhausting trying to keep up. I'm in. Okay, so R thirty and up, nine seventy-six to do that market study and move everybody three percent within those ranges. The police plan, water plan, and fire plan have their own increases, and we worked diligently with those teams to make sure that we were capturing what they need, this type of thing. I'll give you just one quick example, uh, like in fire, uh, paramedics is, is like a unicorn, you just, you know they exist, but you can't ever see one, you know? It's harder to recruit. So we worked on that, making sure that that was competitive within the market specifically. So these are not just throw it at the wall, we really got in there and looked at each plan and see if it can meet its needs. Uh, two point six million for that. And then the ongoing market, right? So between the budgets, things don't just stay the same. So H R is looking at twenty-five percent of the classifications throughout the year to make sure that those are staying up because it just doesn't stop budget time to budget time. Market's still moving forward. So we set aside in our budget proposal for a, a pot of money that as we do it through the year and find out that a particular position is sliding backwards quicker than others, we can push that one at this point. So it's budget time and also year to year, okay? So just to recap, merit, merits up to four percent, and regular plan, step plans are increasing, going to the eighteen dollars starting wage for the city itself. Um, we're eliminating zero four R. There's just so few positions left in there that it'd make sense to move them up to five and then they would roll up under a five instead of a four, okay? And then thirty, thirty R up, the step plans, the ongoing market adjustments, reviews throughout the year, and then also keeping with the cost share on the merit. So all of that combined is our request for compensation for employees. The total.
We saw that.
I'm like, wait. So the total of all of that combined, six point five million, which I'm super proud of that, and I know that, uh, city manager is, is this is showing that we're really investing in our team, investing in the people that do the jobs here every day, and this is the combined total of the overall package to move the employees forward with a total investment.
Um, I just want to personally applaud leadership team for this because it's a big number, but it doesn't matter what our projects and, and, and plans are and aspirations, we can't get it done without a good, solid staff. And so I really appreciate, um, the time and the detail and what you've proposed here because we can have all these projects and campaigns, whatever, we can't implement them if we don't have a good, uh, pay scale so we can innovate for us. So thank you so much to all the leadership team, for the time, sure.
Is there a hand back there? Yes. Another question. I just want to say thank you to everybody. This was truly a team effort. Just as the attorney, I can't do all this. I mean, it was everybody. And, you know, every day there was things going on with different divisions and discussions, you're bringing it back and talking about it, and if it wasn't enough, what is enough? So I just want to give everybody that, that participated in this program pushing forth a huge thank you, and I appreciate it.
Randy, I'm sorry, can we, I know you're trying to wrap this.
Sure.
And at the risk of, uh, intruding on our break, just a second, I, I want to explore something with you as briefly as possible. Um, we've done something fairly recently with our culture, uh, to make being remote more accessible and more normalized. I'm curious if you have any thoughts on the effect of that, of retention and quality of work experience for employees? Um, maybe it's a, maybe it's an update we can get from, from a D A S at some point. It seems like a little bit of a longer conversation, but my instinct is that this has been a really wonderful evolution for the city of black staff. One of those slightly intangibles that's just a real benefit, should really be talked up. Um, and I didn't want to leave this section behind without giving voice to, to that dynamic, which I think has some on the scale in, in some ways. Um, and maybe our folks who are participating remotely right now have, uh, particular interest in advocating for this or, um, applauding it, uh, but a, a, any thoughts to share real fast before we, you know, staffing and.
Well, it's one of those changes, I think, to the workforce that's here to sit. I think the pandemic proved that we can do that effectively to some degree. Uh, I think coming out of the pandemic, we've learned a lot of lessons, and there's a ton of articles, a ton of research showing that it, it was great, but not for everybody. There's just some things that it, it's better for on the one side. So I think what we're doing is we're coming down from an all or nothing, because at one point, everybody was at home. And then now we're starting to integrate and we're starting to see where that's appropriate, logical, and where it's not.
And how, where are we ahead of the curve on that in terms of other municipalities or other organizations? How does that become a recruitment opportunity, um, you know, one of the, the checks in our plus column?
Well, definitely is. If you have some flexibility, uh, it's always a recruiting tool, always. And we use that consistently, that we're flexible here, and we have a lot, a lot of managers that are very flexible in how they deal with your schedule.
I, I've heard that Black Staff is ahead of the curve on that too, so just something new.
To some degree, you know? I've seen a couple of agencies that have been doing this for much longer than us. They started before the pandemic, so they've had the experience of maybe five to seven years of doing this. So there are some that are leading the way, but we, we have done a really good job about that, in my opinion. I think we've done a great job of being flexible with staff. Uh, we need to take that to the next level. I'm working on a program right now in my office to, um, formalize positions as fully remote, hybrid, or onsite only. Obviously, a can't drive a truck from home, so there's some that are going to be.
Some days, sir.
Yeah. But if we can formalize that with the divisions and with the city manager's office, and they actually put that on our, our job descriptions, so we can post that and recruit outside of the area, uh, you know, and it's going to be a few positions. But we've, we're just taking that to the next level right now. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Can we get Randy and Heidi around a quick second? Great, we have about a thirteen-minute break. Everyone can come back and be ready to go at ten thirty. And remember, as we talk about budgets, there are always two ways to ensure you stay in budget. Add a zero or move a decimal point. All right, hold on a little bit. Back from break, we are going to resolve an age-old question.
Yes.
By popular vote. Are you ready? This will take about thirty seconds. This is an important question, okay? You're going to vote by popular vote and we are going to settle it. It's called, let's settle it. Are you ready?
Good.
When you load the toilet paper into the toilet paper dispenser, does it come over the top or under? Raise your hand if it's over the top.
Over.
Raise your hand if it's under. It is settled over the top. And now we begin with Jared from the E A C here to do a presentation. Thank you, Jared, for being here.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the city council and mayor for letting me speak today on behalf of the employee advisory committee and our support of the city manager recommended budget. Those who remember by February retreat, we have four main areas kind of for discussion for this upcoming budget cycle, and I am very excited that this current budget in front of you guys addresses all of these areas. I really want to thank the work and the collaborative team effort, uh, both from the city manager, the rest of the budget team, applying very meaningful, creative ways to address all of this. Um, a lot of you guys have seen already, some of these could be highlights of Randy's presentation, um, but I wanted to directly correlate some of the stuff that we talked about and the employees brought concerns about and how the city, that's the budget team chose to directly affect it. So as you guys heard, um, our starting wage will be eighteen dollars come July. And again, this is over the statutory mandated minimum we have to do. So this is done intentionally, very forward-thinking in my opinion. This was done to help our recruitment efforts. You guys saw where we're struggling at. If you've run into businesses in town, whether it's a Walmart or any kind of fast food restaurant, you see a lot of those wanted, um, job openings, a lot of them show a starting wage that's higher than a thirty, sixteen, eighty, so they can pivot a little bit easier in the private sector than we can, but this is huge because it's put right back in the mix of being extremely competitive below end. And then going to the second point, um, I've talked a lot about this. Some of our employees that have been here for a long time in some of those lower wages really felt the effect of that minimum wage really accelerated in the last couple of years. So the budget team made intentional choices on this, and again, really creative here to really add some of that cushion or that buffer that Randy talked about. So it's going to be do wages ten R, do twenty-five R, so all of them get an additional increase to help keep them above that new minimum wage we have. And Randy spoke to this as well. We have large recruitment and retention issues, as you guys saw with our declined offers. So we took a good look at all of those positions and made strategic decisions in each area to try and address that. We're hoping to curb that ninety-eight number significantly next year so we never have to come to this again. But again, these were creative strategies, very pointed things that were made to address these challenges. Again, kind of the big picture plan, you may be in a position where it's not hard to recruit for your position, might not be in the bottom anymore, but you've been here a while, we didn't forget about you either. So everyone in the city that thirty F R and up will at least see some sort of adjustment that's going to be three percent. So again, it's a commitment that the city manager, the rest of the city leadership really values the employees, and all because you're not in a certain high priority area, we didn't forget about you, we're still going to give you an increase. And to go for the future, this is huge. We're making an ongoing commitment to that market adjustment. Randy talked about it in his presentation. We've done a ton of work the last three years to get on this market-based pay plan, and if we stop there, all we're going to do is go backwards. So this ongoing commitment of money to make sure we maintain that competitiveness is huge for the health of the entire organization. Pay for performance, lots of questions on this today. Um, E A C and employee body had some questions. We worked directly with Randy on this, a lot of those things were answered. Um, I think as this project gets rolled out, it'll be a very good thing for the city. I think a little bit of a learning curve, some bumps to run to begin with, but I think we can actually handle that. The key on this, there's a lot of high-performing employees here at the city by staff, which is a great thing, and now we have a mechanism to help not only encourage other people to strive for that, but also to reward these employees who are performing that high. So I think it's very, something we never had before, it was always just a guaranteed three percent merit. It was always just a guaranteed 3% merit, whether you're kind of at the bottom or you're that high performer. And now it's going to be a direct reflection on the employees' work and choices they make. So I want to applaud Randy on freedom of speech as well. Going to benefits. Those that have been with the city long enough have seen, generally speaking, over the years, certain of our plan options will change, whether it's going to be our co-pays going up, out of pocket maximums, our deductibles, any of those changes. And the reason those go up is to help offset some of the medical premiums. We've worked with Shannon, the rest of the benefit committee, to kind of see where NAPAD and also City of Flagstaff falls. The issue we've kind of seen recently is a lot of our co-pay amounts, those other benefit options are kind of in the lower tier of the competitiveness. So we keep changing those, bringing it further and further away from being a competitive pay plan, or sorry, benefit plan. So our recommendation was to make no changes. Budget team agreed with that. However, the other side of the coin of that is medical premiums will be increased. We all knew that. We saw the five or six percent kind of where they fell. The one thing we wanted to make sure happened is all the area we made up last year in implementing our new benefit structure was we stayed within that competitive range, which is going to be that 72%. So the city said, even with those increases, we're going to maintain that 72% of the cost for the base family or the employee plus one family. And the employees will only have to cover 28%. And again, this is back from a research we did last year for the Coquino County, other agencies right around us. And now we're still within that competitive realm. So that's huge because this directly affects the employees' take home pay. With everything else going up, even if their salary does go up a little bit, if medical stuff goes up even higher, they're actually taking a net value loss. So we made a big improvement to not have that happen. Any questions for me so far? Okay. That's pretty much the end of my presentation, but I just really wanted to thank city manager Clinton and the rest of the budget team. It was a huge team effort for all of this, for those many weeks spent trying to find creative ways to help this. And this is a huge ongoing commitment. Six and a half million dollars were invested in our employees, which is an outstanding number. So thank you, appreciate you that.
Thank you for being efficient. You caught up on time.
That's my goal.
We have Randy next to talk about new budget appropriations. Thank you, Randy, for taking these.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Randy Suda, serving as your finance director. So my next couple of slides of the presentation is to provide a summary and overview of the new budget appropriations. What was requested, how much is recommended for funding for the next upcoming budget year? So first off, during the fiscal year 2024 budget process, divisions requested requests for increased fund in total almost $38 million. This included both ongoing and one-time requests. This table kind of breaks that information down. So within the general fund, those requests in total $21 million, both as one-time and ongoing requests. Under personnel, excluding compensation and employee benefit increases, we had requests of 4.9 million in ongoing as well as 600,000 in one-time requests. Other budget requests such as contractual commodities, such as training budgets, software, et cetera. Within the general fund, we had $5.9 million in ongoing requests and $9.7 million in one-time requests. Giving a total overall budget request just within the general fund of 10.8 in ongoing and 10.3 in one-time. Looking at all the other funds, so this mostly represents our special revenue funds and our enterprise funds, our total request for $16.5 million. Again, personnel related, excluding compensation and employee benefits, we have requests of ongoing of 1.8 million and just 17,000 in one-time. And then those other budget requests, 6.4 million in ongoing and 8.4 million in one-time. And there's those totals at the bottom. So you can see a significant amount of requests from all of the divisions for this upcoming budget needs. So outside of those budget requests, we also had employee investments. So Randy presented this information earlier on some citywide numbers. So I'm just going to focus a little bit on the impact on the general fund and the significant needed investments in employees and how those impacted the general fund. So moving to pay for performance, this was just over a $2 million impact to the general fund. The starting wage of $18 an hour adjustments, a $475,000 impact. The ongoing merit adjustments of $170,000. Market and other pay plan adjustments, 2.3 million. And then medical insurance, maintaining that cost share is just over $300,000 for a total employee investment in the general fund of just over $5.3 million. And I will say, that's probably the largest impact I've seen in my 15 years in the city. In addition to employee investment, we made huge strides also in relation to infrastructure needed for both infrastructure and operating capital within the general fund. We allocated an additional $400,000 to fund fleet purchases as well as an additional $400,000 for facility improvements. We invested another half a million dollars for fiber projects as well as $489,000 in other IT infrastructure. As well as we funded $3.1 million in the general fund for carbon neutrality projects related to Net Resco in the upcoming year. Again, this is just an investment just under $4.9 million. So how were we able to fund all of those amazing things? So during the February budget retreat, we shared that we had $4.7 million in ongoing available funding as well as another $20 million in one-time available funding. We also, during our department reviews, we were able to identify an additional $1.2 million in resource, one-time resources related to our PSPRS contingency. We were able to reallocate as well as other projected savings in fiscal year 2023. We also had some funding set asides. We know that we have funded merits at that 3% level in the five-year plan. So that provided 1.7 million in ongoing and 800,000 related to some set asides for operating capital and infrastructure. So starting half the year for fiscal year 2023, 24, we have $6.1 million in ongoing resources and $24 million in one-time resources. So what did we recommend? How did we split that money and how did we allocate that money in the city manager's recommended budget? So you can see that first item, investing in employees at $3.5.3 million. Also investing in infrastructure, $4.9 million one-time. Also in our other budget requests, this is net, of that $21 million worth of requests, we funded just over $1 million in ongoing requests and $7.4 million in one-time requests. Now, I will note that many of the requests that we funded with one-time dollars were really ongoing requests and would have liked to have been able to fund them on a ongoing basis. But with our significant commitment to employee compensation and benefits, we just were not able to move the needle on that number. And we will need to request and fund those again next year as part of the split year 25 bracket. We also allocated just over $9.2 million to fund other funds. This does include the $9 million we have reserved for stormwater needs. And lastly, we did set aside an additional $2.5 million for fiscal year 25 for capital.
Infrastructure investment. Will we have more of a breakdown on what that entails?
So. Just a specific area? Because this is how we got to that form.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Other questions on this slide? So in the end, we are at net zero. We had $14,000 left in ongoing and we're a little bit negative on our one-time to net to zero. This city manager recommended budget does not include any property tax increases to the line. Or construction. Yeah, absolutely.
The set aside for capital reserve, what does that bring us up to on our reserves?
So this is, this is something different than like our fund balance reserve. So we require a minimum of a 20% fund balance reserve. This is outside, this is really intended to set aside money. So next year, as we have requests for infrastructure or other operating capital needs, we could then allocate that to those needs.
But this is in addition to what we have already?
Yes, that is correct.
So what's the, you know, the increase in what we have already set aside for capital reserves to?
I'll have to get back to my exact what that looks like. So kind of now taking a moment to kind of look at our budget requests over this next few slides, reviewing our budget requests and recommended requests for approval through the PBB and my PBB quartile. And so you can see here, our total requests and our total recommendations by each of the quartiles. So just through a little bit of context, right? Most aligned PBB quartile or quartile one, we often reference two, are those programs that most align with our key community priorities and objectives. And then moving down, quartile two is our more aligned. Quartile three is less aligned. And then quartile four is least aligned to those PBB programs or key community priorities. So you can see we received 11.9 million in requests from programs tied to quartile one where they're most aligned. And we funded 6.7, 6.9 million of those requests. In quartile two, or more aligned, we received 11.6 million in program requests and funded just over 10.1 million. In quartile three, or less aligned, we had 8.9 million in requests and funded just over 7.6 million. And lastly, in our quartile four, we had $4.7 million in requests and funded approximately 4.7. And so as you can see in this graph, we did fund programs in our quartile three and four programs. This will occur as we do have several mandated programs in these quartiles that we, those services we are required to provide as a safe. And these requests usually are to just maintain service levels, not to increase service levels. Or they could have been related to some restricted funds. Again, remembering our color of money. We have different pots of money for different, to fund different programs. And if there was restricted money available for those programs, that's how they could have been affected as well. So here is just kind of providing a summary of the requests by quartile. I'm just looking at the data a little bit differently. So you can see based on the requests, 64% of our requests were related to quartile one and two programs. And 47%, yeah, did I do my math correctly? Yes, 37% related to quartile three and four. And a similar data here, based on the recommendations for approval by quartile. Again, we funded 58% of our requests were either in that more or most aligned to our key community priorities. And the remaining 40, oh, 42%. Damn, math on the spot is tough for me. Was our least aligned or less aligned?
Hey, Randy?
Yeah, absolutely.
I could interject, and this one might be one for Chris Brody. But it might be helpful at this point to talk about what we typically see in the least aligned quartile four and why that exists. The numbers here are pretty impressive in terms of how we're aligning, but I'm sure council's curious. Well, what falls into that fourth quartile?
Yeah, I mean, so all of our programs are, you know, Chris can probably explain this much better than I can because I'm the PBB expert in the room. But those programs, you know, all of our programs are rated and evaluated on all of our community priorities. So you do, I mean, we will always have some quartile three and quartile four programs that don't align with those key community priorities, but many of those services are either mandated or required. Do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, I'll be great. Thank you, Mayor, President, Councilman, Commissioner, and Analyst. So to give you a quick overview of how this works, we'll go over this more in the future in this retreat. But every program or function the city undertakes is scored either based on whether it's a community program that faces the community and speaks to our constituents or whether it's a governance program and actually works in controlled organizations. That's kind of things like IT and finance, keep organizations running. That determines which rubric is scored against. And there are some programs that don't score very well in the whole slew of things. They might still score well in one particular area, but not in everything. But that doesn't mean it's completely pointless that we shouldn't be doing anymore. It's typically things that are, as mentioned, state mandated or federally mandated. So in the past, we've seen things like maintaining our website or codifying our city code. Those kinds of things that we absolutely need to be doing, but it might not speak to those same kinds of priorities that the community wants to see the city doing. But they're necessary functions just to keep organizations running that way. So you'll see that there are fewer things spent in that fourth quartile, but there are still some because there are still necessary functions in that last quartile. We'll talk more tomorrow about how our scoring works and ways that we can improve that in the future to best capture the actual needs of working. Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This is kind of my last slide, kind of summarizing the data again, a little bit differently, showing what percentage of the requests in each quartile are recommended for approval. So you can see overall, we funded 80%. Again, a very high percentage of our requests this year we were able to fund. And you can see by category, so most aligned, we funded 59%. More aligned, 88%. Least aligned, 86%. And then, I mean, less aligned and then least aligned, we did fund almost 100% of those requests. So that concludes my presentation.
Question?
Yeah.
So could you refresh my memory on how often and what is the process that we go out to the community to get these priorities for our priority based budgeting process?
So Chris is actually going to be presenting all that information in the future. PBB, I believe tomorrow, was that correct, Chris?
Yeah, we'll finish through that.
Okay, thank you.
So we just talked about why we're doing the least aligned overall. But under most aligned, we're only doing 59% of what's most aligned in our goals. So Randy or the city manager maybe make some comments about of these things that are really aligned with our goals. We can't do, what, what are the examples of things that we're pushing to decide?
I think there are some requests that we receive that it's just the timing. We all agree that they're very high priorities, but that, and that we will be looking to fund those in the very near future. Some personnel requests that certainly hit that quartile one. But weren't quite needed this year, but we know they're going to be needed in the future.
I ran out of the details.
Those are the details.
That less must align or align.
Okay.
I don't know, city manager Clinton has anything to add to that one?
No, I think that's a good response. And I think the takeaway here for council and everybody is we're always mindful of how we're ranking with these expenditures. That is the essence of priority based budgeting. And I think we're doing well when you look at it in the aggregate, you know, the top two. You know, the, the top two quartiles is how I look at it. And as you can see, what was that, that number percentage-wise? Brandy, uh, like, with the top.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight percent.
Just over $18 million in what have those first projects. So the next part of our presentation is really going to dive into each of the quartiles. What programs, um, we're going to highlight some of the programs that are in each quartile and those requests and what we've funded with those requests. Um, so we have a lot of great speakers coming up next to kind of really dig into some of the details of those recommended requests and what programs are associated with those requests. Thank you, Brandy. I think we still have half an hour before lunch. So if we could invite one of those speakers to highlight some of the recommended budget requests and we could get going on that, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Um, we're, Shannon and I are going to start, we're going to be the first to sit and present. We're going to talk a little bit about, um, an illustrative list, not a complete list, but illustrative list of what kind of things are in those quartiles, most aligned, more aligned, and so forth. So we'll, we'll walk you through some of those and get into a little bit of the nuance. But we're not going to do deep, deep diving. But if you want to, we have the answer in the room as the boss can say. Somebody out here has the answer to your question. So you get a sense of what was requested, uh, demonstrating the need citywide, and then the ability of, um, what budget has, uh, has funded. So we'll just, uh, kind of walk through some of this. Uh, budget development and monitoring, um, that is a number of expenses associated with, um, both, um, materials and supplies, associate, excuse me, associated with, um, the, uh, performance-based budgeting. It's software-driven and has a number of material supply, professional service expenses that have to be expensed. In addition to that, there are, uh, there are staff additions to support the PBB and budgeting effort. So that's illustrative of the types of expenditures. The color of money that you're going to be seeing here represents PC gold. That's typically, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's general fund. If you see a different color, that means it's a different type of fund. And in some cases, you know, things cross multiple funds. Um, and then you see the on, the ongoing commitment and then one-time commitment. And, and I'll, I'll dive a little bit more into that with some of the other, one of the examples. Emergency management, um, this is pretty exciting for us. We have now hired an emergency manager and we have created an emergency management function that the city flagged out. And, you know, when the community has a couple of federal declarations a year, it's probably time. Uh, and so, um, in the past, due to, some of these expenses are in addition to, um, creating a budget. You know, just a budget for emergency management. Uh, they are supporting the, the hires, vehicle, uh, expenses, professional contractual services. So establishing that budget. Uh, the next couple, fire suppression and fire all risk, and they're kind of somewhat linked to another one on the next slide. But the way we do the, I think the fire department is a, not a unique example, but for instance, your firefighters go out and perform emergency medical services and fire suppression. And so performance-based budgeting would have us evaluate distributed costs into both of those as if they were separate cost centers. And so what you see in this illustration is, in some cases, redundant. We've split those costs. In most cases for, um, fire suppression and all risk, catastrophic emergency, those are really ongoing expenses. Many cases, we're using one times. Budget team has been trying to tackle that. They've been doing a good job over the last couple of years. This year was a tough year, but those are basically maintenance of efforts. Personnel services, now, in some cases, many of our professional development costs that are, that are in professional, uh, and operating supplies, those are what you see represented into these large areas in channel. Take over on the next one.
Thank you. Shannon Jones, Water Services Division Director. Um, so we'll be touching a couple of, of ideas and concepts around stormwater management, uh, which continues to be part of our dialogue and the plans going forward. Um, this particular, we'll talk about the floodplain management. So we're, you know, have a recommendation for an increase. Um, that's really, I would say it's more the innovation of how we continue to develop in our floodplain management and also how pre-incident that we plan and prepare going forward. Uh, so the ongoing cost is really creating robustness in that program in stormwater, which we come up a couple of times on how we're, how we're adding facility and how we respond and how we maintain what we've already done and, and protect those investments. So of that $376,000 request of ongoing, one is an additional position within water services for stormwater supervisor to navigate that. And it also includes about $250,000 in additional preseason flood mitigation. Again, as we continue to, to build on that momentum of, of, of the assessment, what have we learned and how, how do we move to an operational ongoing investment into our stormwater mitigation? Moving on to grant management, uh, so along with all the programs we're doing, you see multiple incidences where grants and the success that the city has had in obtaining those and applying those in projects. But it also creates a strain on administrative efforts. So within the grant management, um, there is a request for $87,000 monitoring funding. It's actually a, um, administrative specialist to help manage those grant applications, the reporting, and how to continue to be successful in obtaining those and managing those under, uh, throughout the project. The, uh, the 6,800 at one time, I think is really more linked with onboarding that individual, how to get them a license, the training, development, get them involved in the memberships so they can be successful as they move forward. And for infrastructure management, uh, so some, some ongoing costs, uh, really around additional license seats for new employees that are coming in and how we get them into our software programs, get them the access that they need. And then their one-time costs of $135,000 is really driven by, by two things. One is about half a million dollars in the ongoing continuation of fiber optic extension throughout our city. And moving through that, and then about $330,000 in increased, increased, uh, infrastructure management and licensing. Uh, so again, as we add innovation into our city and that program, how do you sustain that? How do you move forward that's maintained the existing infrastructure we have while we look to expand things like a fiber optic system? Okay, uh, next slide, let's still lean. Um, and I don't see any questions on the first slide, we'll go into the next one.
So for your, for your grant management, 87 ongoing, does that spread over all of your grants? Or is that just for one grant? So I guess I'm, what I'm asking is the grant administrator or management, do, does that person do all of your grants? And do you take a little bit from each grant to make that?
Um, I, I think there is, uh, there's, and this is what we've come up with. Uh, but I think they do touch, they touch all of them, not one specifically.
Okay.
Cross, but I'll let you elaborate.
Um, yeah, so we have three grants and contract specialists. This position is actually administrative specialist under, directly underneath that will support the whole section. Um, we do not divvy out our, um, costs of all the grants. We just oversee citywide all grants. Um, and we are under the indirect cost rate. Um, so we just manage the 200-plus right now grants. So now there's no specific charge to each grant.
But don't you take a little bit of administrative costs from each?
It's the indirect cost.
It's indirect, yeah.
Yeah, so when we have a federal grant, we'll have direct costs and we'll have an indirect. And then that goes into the general fund that funds our, you know, all that, those management services functions. And it comes from each and every grant that we give, every federal grant that we write.
Good, yeah, all right. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next one, I'm going to come, I'm going to, I'm going to lump in medical response for wildfire management. Similar to what we spoke of on the previous slide, those are expenses that are somewhat redundant in both those areas because we're distributing the costs. For instance, personal protective equipment. Personal protective equipment is required by the workforce in each of the different areas. And so those costs are not redundant, but they are distributed to those other efforts, whether it's emergency medical services or wildfire management. Everything that you see in here, I shouldn't say everything, but the majority of the things you see are really maintenance of effort, keeping the service that we currently have on the street this year going next year. So next, a lot of commodities, a lot of professional contractors. Okay? So I looked that up, um, what was it, Brandy?
All right, so I'll touch briefly on, uh, public housing. So one of the, one of the items, quartile one, uh, $125,000 ongoing cost, which is really just, stay attached to kind of inflation, where the cost, um, to do business, those maintenance, the contracts, the day-to-day HVAC heating, those things that have to impair. Um, so we're seeing an uptick in that. Um, and then of course, uh, back to stormwater infrastructure maintenance. Some of the floodplain, I talked a little about the, um, the addition of continuing, how we continue to find things to do better. I think under the stormwater infrastructure, um, it's, it's kind of the counterparts in that about, again, how do we continue to manage the services that we're doing now? Um, so that we don't lose ground on that. So within the stormwater infrastructure maintenance, $229,000 of ongoing also includes two additional positions requested for the stormwater team, um, for open channel cleaning, pipe maintenance, um, and, and again, being available to, to bolster our, our response and then the stormwater maintenance side. Um, in addition, equipping those individuals, uh, with ongoing costs of, again, training, development, making sure they have the supplies and tools that they need. On the other, other side, $1.8 million at one time is really driven by setting aside about $1.8 million in anticipation of sediment removal in the basins that we've built. Um, so I think we've heard about that right now. That is still kind of, um, it's an issue, that's what we earmarked, particularly we can clean those basins. But ultimately, we'll be making that determination as years progress on how frequently they fill up, what is the size of events, what is that impact, and the continued improvement as, as needed. Uh, but definitely, definitely a big cost for, for us, again, is maintaining that these flood mitigation processes are being put in place. How do we maintain them so that they work in the future and moving forward? Traffic system management. Uh, this one, it does have also an additional position on the $114,000 ongoing is, is a request for a transportation planner that would assist in traffic engineering. And then about $11,000 in additional cost increase to, um, traffic detection and traffic testing equipment. So it is my understanding that this department manages about 38 signalized traffic intersections that is critical infrastructure for flow, traffic, and safety. And so again, looking to increase investments into that detection and testing equipment. Uh, fortunately for me, we go back to water services, capital project delivery. Um, so we do have a request for an additional project manager to live within water services engineering, really geared towards the delivery of projects. Um, a lot of things in the works, um, a lot of funding coming in and a lot of needs on the capital side. So where I'm looking to add to that team, um, so that's 130, about 132,000 on ongoing. The 5,000 is really, I would say, onboarding that individual, making sure they, they have the equipment that they need, um, equipment, license, access to those programs. Uh, continuing to build on that, water services computerized remote monitoring. Um, so again, um, adding that innovation into our systems, how do we, how do we, how do we robust this? And how do we protect the city as we add those innovations to things like cybersecurity? So for water services, computerized remote monitoring, we do have about $106,000 on ongoing. That is requesting an additional position that would be mainly focused on the cybersecurity, making sure we protect the city through that, uh, that type of risk, but also helping in the project management delivery of programs within that, um, that technology, the technology section of water services. Right? How we, how we monitor our mobile movie? How do we manage data that comes in, um, through our, through our treatment processes? And how do we do communication across, um, a wide surface area? In addition to that, there is some, uh, one-time cost, about $120,000 again is allocated to, um, improving our, um, the servers, uh, communication equipment, on how they, um, making sure that that stuff works when we need it, how's it communicated, and how we manage our data. About $40,000 in security equipment upgrades from how we access our buildings to, um, how we protect our servers and how we do things like badges into rooms and who has access into what. Uh, so with that being said, that concludes the portion of the sheet. Those able to touch on the mark of our management. Again, we're available for questions, we think that we can answer.
So, um, just a couple of, in, in chief, you might have covered this, um, ongoing. Um, and maybe I was lazy, never bet. Um, the one-time for medical response, what is that, being compared to the ongoing? What, what do you need the 232 on the one-time of the setting to?
Not to get into the detail, but typically in one-time care, medical response, uh, pretty, um, um, implements by, uh, materials, fuel for the trucks, the distribution of the cost of fuel for trucks, maintenance of vehicles in the shop. There is a, uh, there is the, you saw a, uh, you saw a, um, staffing increase in Southwest for a fire captain. And the fire captain is a fire captain to be assigned to emergency medical services in support of our emergency medical program and specifically our CARE ONE program, right? And oversight. So that is, uh, a ongoing, an ongoing expense? Thank you, Brandy. Um, the ongoing expenses that we see left here. Uh, remainder of it is essentially just continuing operations, interior squad, professional contractual, training firefighters, certifications, putting gas in the vehicle, maintaining the vehicle. Those types of expenses are in there as well, PPE.
So I'm kind of just in my head trying to differentiate between one, uh, one time. Some of those seem like ongoing, every year we're going to have that.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the things the budget team's been trying to address. You know, it's typically where we'd like to be is in a position where ongoing expenses, uh, are, are actually covered by ongoing revenues, not there yet. And then so in general fund, you'll see, uh, every year, we, we, uh, we submit for, um, ongoing expenses just to maintain the, the service level that we currently have. And year by year, we've been trying to do a better job of aligning those with ongoing revenues. What you see here is in part, um, where we're falling short of being able to.
That's what they talked about earlier, that we were trying to get to fifth person.
Exactly. It's, it's that, exactly.
Okay, okay. That, that helps me make some sense. Um, okay, thank you. And that kind of covered all of that list, but I need to.
Okay, great. Thank you. We actually, um, have, is it Nicole and Dan here? Or, yeah, Nicole and Dan here, um, with a few more minutes before lunch. So thank you for your patience, we will get you fed very shortly. Nicole and Dan.
We're in a really powerful position right now.
We are.
Same.
Don't ask questions, chief.
Yeah.
So we are going to talk about quartile two, those more aligned to key community priorities. So there were a total of 277 requests at $1.5 million. And we're able to fund 83% of those, basically 231 at 10.1. Uh, and some of the things, most of the things we did fund were the goldbacks. Gold in my simple line stands for general fund, G for G, gold, general fund. And then the green are special revenue funds. And the turquoise blue at the bottom, those are enterprise funds. Just if we're looking at the color of them. And so for the 911 communications center, some of the cool things, well, just have like one or two cool things that we're able to fund. So one is, uh, computer aided dispatch console replacements. So the consoles is where the employees work in the dispatch center and they're roughly about 15 years old. They come with, they raise them lower so you don't have to.
They come with, they raise them lower, so you don't have to sit for 10, 12 hours, you can raise them up and stand. We have cool little treadmills that will go underneath, so you can run on the treadmill so that you get some exercise while you're in there. And they have little bike seats, so you can sit on a bicycle while you're dispatching. They're 15 years old, but they also come with climate control on them too, so if you're high, you can turn on fans. Problem is, over the years, the climate controls have been failing, and so during the winter, every console's got a portable heater plugged in. Good thing Scott's up close. The other neat thing we're doing for the communications center is some software for victim notification. So much like when you order a package from Amazon, they let you know when it's shipped, when it arrives, and then send you a survey, this does the same thing for law enforcement. So it'll let you know that Officer Mussman's on route to take your call. If Officer Mussman gets delayed or has to go to hot call, they maybe let you, they'll let you know that it's been reassigned, we haven't forgot about you, Officer Smith will be on his way soon. Officer Smith takes the call and sends you another text that says, here's your report number, here's how you get ahold of Officer Smith, if you have anything to add, and we'll be in touch with you. Then if that case goes up to detectives, it lets you know the detective assigned to the case, their phone number, their email, and the staffs of the case. And at the end of the day, it sends you a survey. Was your call answered promptly? Was the dispatcher professional? Did the officer show up on time? Those kinds of things. So it's a feedback process. Second one, affordable housing unit creation. The big thing under this is incentive funds for 10 ownership units during the year, and that makes up 130,000 of that, as well as a housing planner position for contract management, outreach, and housing planning responsibilities. The next one, BBD right-of-way streetscape maintenance. So some of this is portable restroom rentals, and the other part of it, smart irrigation cloud-based systems. There's also some minimum wage increases that make up the difference there. Under business retention and expansion, BBD election education, one-time funding for the innovative weight, innovative waste challenge, sorry. And then some ongoing funding to support the continued use of business retention and expansion incentives.
Great. I'm going to pop in real quick and talk about the few items left on this slide. So in city facility inspection and maintenance, facilities is in critical need of a work order assessment management system, which will help enhance maintenance practices. Council is familiar with the vast number of facilities that we have across our community, and this is going to help facilities be more efficient with their limited resources. And, and I'm going to keep this very high level, in climate action, and we'll be hearing this a few times more throughout the day, but the major investment in this area, in this quartile, is the energy conservation contract with Neresco, which the council approved just recently. And that's at 4.4 million dollars, and we're really excited to get that launched and moving forward, which is going to start next. We're also including in here an ongoing energy rate analysis to ensure that our APS counts are in the correct rate structure, and this will help us ensure that they are having the most savings that we can. In community climate change, a number of one-time funding requests are being funded to get important resources directly into the Flagstaff community, including Homa Energy rebates, a Woodstow rebate pilot program, which will be leveraged against the federal rebate program, and CEE funding to re-launch a shared mobility program.
Yeah, please. So the 4.1 million, or the 4.4 million is the Neresco contract, and so is that part of, when we were looking at the infrastructure general fund cost, that's not too separate?
Correct. It's kind of, yes. So we're talking about the same funding, the general fund made up the lion's share of that 4.4 million?
Right.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you for asking that question.
Going to the next slide, community policing investments. So that is our body camera program, as well as some additional overtime to help provide security for community events, whether that's concerts in the park, etc. CBB programming, I have to look at my notes, includes airport promotions for printed digital platforms, City of Flagstaff for treatment, and EBA ambassadors for the downtown is the ongoing one there. Criminal investigations for us, we had to update our interview rooms upstairs, and we updated our forensic drying cabinet. So if you take bloody clothes into evidence, you have to let them dry before you can submit them, to preserve that evidence. Emergency and non-emergency uniform response, the big ticket item there is maintenance on our public safety radio system.
Great. Sure, the last two, I'll get to see if you can. Our recruitment, and you've been hearing a fair amount about recruitment already. Slide in my notes. So within this quartile, the funding here is to complement an increased institution assistance program and a market analyst position, which is crucial to the discussion you had earlier this morning. And then in stormwater, public education and outreach, the recommended, recommended items for approval are additional training for staff, which we know is critical right now, additional rain gauge and stage gauge site equipment, and with 26 sites, at least one site needs to be replaced annually. There's also an additional rain gauge system repair maintenance line item, which is required by FEMA, as is public outreach tasks that are included in this quartile. Any questions?
All right, let's get on our nerves. We do have a 30-minute lunch, and we have lunch set out in the back for everyone, so we encourage you to enjoy that. And before you do, I wanted to ask you, are you aware what NASA's new tag night is going to be after they experience upcoming budget cuts? NASA, the sky is the limit. Enjoy your lunch. The sky is the limit. It's time to get started. As everyone is finding their seats, we have another Let's Settle It game. Are you ready?
Ready.
All right. So remember, when we play Let's Settle It, it's majority rules, and this is going to be a, an area where we just seem to have lots of different opinions. So here, are you ready for this one? Okay. The question is going to be, is it data or data? So make sure you're ready to vote. If you're for data, raise your hand. And if you're for data, raise your hand. Oh, we've got to do that one again. Are you ready? Everyone that's for data, raise your hand. Okay, and then raise your hand if you're for data.
We're here, Rick.
Let's settle. And it looks like we're ready to get started. Mayor, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go ahead and start with Scott Overton. Thank you for getting here, Scott.
Well, that's very interesting data for you. Oh, we're in trouble now. Watch this, checking this out. All right, here we go. Welcome back from lunch. I am covering the quartile three, which is a less aligned quartile than obviously the two you heard about before your lunch. Keep in mind, just because you're less or least aligned, doesn't mean it's not an important city priority or a city value, and so you're still going to find items, and you'll see them in a moment. They added up to right around $9 million of requests, $7.5 million that got approved. So obviously, the budget team felt that there's still a fairly large, significant portion of a least, less aligned program that needs some attention on the budget side. And you'll see, a lot of these oftentimes don't necessarily come across in real lab lines to be cutting edge, but they're really essential to core service and government function. Just a couple of highlights from the left-hand side here, 1200 funds received, both ongoing and one-time money. This is related to the CARES unit and their administrative captain and their unit project Skipping down to security, facilities, access control, this is a larger amount on this unit. Some ongoing is a bigger number on this category, and that really is reflected because there are now three police aides that are in the proposed budget to cover security services at the downtown library and city facility, city hall in particular, and it also has a big chunk of access control improvements. Another real large one, and these are a little bit assigned to those of us that are more aligned as well with the staff perspective, the facility equipment repair, continued ongoing focus, and then we have a much, much bigger chunk of one-time going to equipment pair and building facilities needs. And then another very large police emergency response item that I wanted to point out is the, I'm trying to get this right, oh, I'm sorry, is a lot of some one-time things for our SWAT team and some other response resources, but the real big one in this one is the dispatch consoles that Chief Mussman spoke about before lunch, and the upgraded consoles for our dispatch professionals. Yes?
Domestic markets, is that a tourism?
Domestic markets is a bulk of BBD funded items. I think, you want to speak to these, or I'm going to run through your list.
Oh, is she going to go over this?
She's right here, I kind of use perspective. I have the laundry list, but it's a lot of BBD items. It's $300,000 worth, there they are. It's true data.
Very nice question. It's, it's basically all of our marketing promotion, so we do several campaigns, and we have several definitions. One that we're particularly going to be working on a lot is high-altitude training. We have a lot of marathoners that are up here and we're not talking about, but that's sort of like the marathon city. We're going to talk a little bit about, we're going to be doing more on the craft beer. We already do a lot of it, but we're going to actually do more because there's huge work for the eight craft beer stays and things like that. So basically, anything you can think of, we're working on it, and this helps us. We have to do print, digital, and out-of-home, and out-of-home tends to be a little more expensive because those are the things that you might see, like on a bus and all of that. So we're putting that to perspective, and we're really trying to do a lot more for the restaurants and the bars as well, because we know that they've been really burning. We actually did, we've done a lot, but we're going to, we really ramped that up.
And a part of it all, the power of maneuver, all BBD.
All BBD.
Yes.
Exactly.
Do you have any questions on quartile three, less aligned?
I have one, Scott. Sir, effectively, police aides, security, remind me, was that two positions or three?
Three positions. And then it also provides their support equipment, so vehicle, radios, those types of things.
Thank you. Just a refresher for council, you know, we broached this back in February, and now you're seeing it a little bit more defined and with exact numbers. Very important project as we are seeing the need, frankly, to have some presence in our facilities, but not, you know, uniform armed officers, but figures of authority, and the police aide we think is a really good fit. This will help with our libraries, the city hall, even with facilities such as this on a roaming basis. So a good fit. Chief, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that, the budget team has talked about this at length.
Okay, that's their question.
Yeah. Well, I'm curious, what are some of the issues that are being tackled by that?
So what we're seeing is, right now, we contract with security, and the security person that comes in the library sometimes doesn't show up, sometimes it's a different person.
Well, what I'm asking about is, what kind of security issues are there? Is it, is it youth?
Behaviors. Behaviors, will be verbally aggressive towards staff, coming into the bathrooms and basically taking a shower, spreading out a yard sale type thing, some issues of disrespectful.
I can imagine the possibilities, you know, or specific.
Probably scary. Well. You know, in the libraries, I think, take the front of it because they're open every day, and so when, like, school's closed, I know parents drop off their kids and use them as daycare, and then we have a very substantial transient population that also likes to get out in the weather, so they use those facilities as well. So just, we want to be supportive of our library staff and of city staff, trying to provide more secure environment.
Thank you. Yeah, what I would add to that is, you know, it's deterrence, it's, we have seen the effectiveness of having an individual in the lobby at city hall, and it's, it's very friendly, you know, you're asked to sign in, and if you need to visit staff upstairs or in one of the offices, a phone call is made, and that staff person will come out and brief the individual, bring him or her to the office to conduct business. So we're trying to find a means that is not overly intrusive or authoritative, but yet has enough presence to deter the bad behavior that the chief is speaking to. Yes, please.
Okay, so here I go again. In the world we live in today, do our security people have any type of training in terms of emergency staff? And you know what staff and trucks are?
Yes, thank you, Council members. They will have training, much like our existing police aides do have, and basics of escalation and that, and then we'll probably give them some additional training in facilities security. So we haven't built that program in, but it is coming. And I might add that we do have a security focus group, part of our facilities advisory committee and public works and facilities, Sam and Joe run that group, and they have been meeting fairly regularly, and as we've ramped up some efforts with the help of the police department, they do some, I know that maybe it's not active shooter training any longer, but something I said is response to active shooter. So they're starting to provide more trainings to staff and to, you know, people that maybe aren't normally in the role, better situational awareness. We are working on, in part of this number, through the facility advisory committee, some improvements to our video surveillance and our access control, and those are working our way. They are very expensive, and obviously, we've got to work through all of our city facilities, but I, I think I've appreciated the attitudes of, you know, taking more of a holistic approach, it's not just one solution. It's everyone getting attention, it's controlling access, it's having, when we need it, maybe uniformed officers at a more contentious meeting, but then scaled down and more of a security or a police aide in a different role that can respond. And then, I know the CARES meeting winds up down town, I mean, so I think we're trying to track it from a lot of different levels, because it still is a public facility, it still should be somewhat open, and we're really trying to keep that balance versus, you know, metal detectors and a more of a controlled environment, which is probably not realistic, much generally, or for what we're trying to achieve. Thank you all. And quartile four. Scott.
So the quartile four, this slide's pretty simple to summarize, another 4.7 million on this slide that was approved to require, 4 million of that is the CARES funds for that airport. And 4 billion of the 4.9 million, 4.092 million of that CARES funds will be used on deferred maintenance. So obviously, the airport gets a tremendous amount of traffic, a lot of repair on physical land, so that $4 million has been earmarked for some of that deferred maintenance needs to be done, restroom improvements, various things of that nature. That is, quarter where I was educated on it earlier, is all CARES money, so it's the last of that, so that's not going to amount to no fund. There's one in line on the menu here that has an individual that's going to be funded out of that, in terms of a general fund. So there's a one person in that that is. Payment management. So there's also a part of the streets is an asset management and order system that's going to be funded at 250,000, I'm afraid there's a tracking system for all of the maintenance that Sam and his crew does back there. all of the, the maintenance that Sam and his crew does back there. And then the police recruiting and hiring. A portion of this is for housing and tuition for the academy, which is a great thing. Uh, mill plans for the recruits and so on. So that's a, that's a big part since we brought in the academy into the, to the city itself. Overtime budgets also included in there as well. And then our uh, panel research and review, that part is uh, on multiple lines here. So a lot of administrative options are going out there. Don't have a lot to, to do on this one. Like I said, most of that came out of the care spot and most of it was shoddy for that uh, airport in particular slides. Is there any questions? Pretty straightforward. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ray.
Everybody's so efficient today that you're having to scramble to get everyone ready to keep going. So good job. Making my job harder in a good way. All right, Rick, let's take it away.
Take us. Let's go. We'll hold up that discussion a little while. We can say everyone's, uh, but we will have to pick a little later. Um, so we thought we'd break out this part of the conversation. It is related to how we fight the four towels. Uh, service partner contracts fall in the third quartile or less aligned quartile. But there's some funding things we want to just share with council on here and we may have not to have some direction from you. Uh, City Mayor Greg Clifton will help me with this presentation also. So here, you know, I always go up through my, my intro with service partners. Uh, this is a reminder, they're contracted by cities. We do not give donations uh, to organizations. We need to get a service or product in return. Uh, so we sign into contracts that maybe there's things that the city doesn't want to run, manage, but we outsource those and have contracts to deliver services for our community. Uh, they follow with pyramid processes. It's competitive process where it needs to be, unless it's a sole for potential uh consideration. So that's just my intro to, you know, how we get service partners. And these are our general fund service partners. Uh, this top, um by hand here. The top eight of these service partners from United Way down to um, Boys and Girls Club and then partners with the city's ten partners. These are longstanding contracts that we have, uh, deliver uh several different variety of services within our organization. Um, so these are very consistent and very uh familiar contracts that we have. If you have a question on them, I'm glad to talk about what we're delivering these. Um, our largest contract is United Way, uh, and then it goes down. These bottom uh, five are those that have kind of been newer, received some one time funding maybe for startup, uh, working those programs. Um, we set aside twenty five thousand here for shelter overflow. This was uh, years ago, we saw in the winter time there's that expansion of need to get people uh housed. Uh, but we saw over the last couple of years as like shelter service and other agencies expand what they have in their capacity. This hasn't been utilized as much. Uh, but we're also looking at uh potential funding for shelter services. Uh, we'll talk about that on the next slide. Uh, Blackwood Experience, uh, we're looking to continue our partnership there uh for a fourth year, I believe, in there. Uh, Elevate Pre-K, we just provided them some upstart monies uh for that program. Global is very happy to be partnering to help them deliver that in a primary center. And they got some great matching from the states as a result of us being a partner. Uh, good information there. Uh, mobile outreach, uh, we helped them with startup funds last year. We had a conversation about that. Uh, so we kind of helped them with their operation startups uh in um, the current fiscal year. And this, uh, the column under right is what the budget team has proposed in funding for the company.
Let's get this straight. Yeah, please.
Don't kick me. Um, I'm surprised and maybe we just never had that we don't have habitat or humanity on there. Um, and then I'm quite, I wonder, because I write grants for non-profit I have and I know usually it's required, but is there any is there any financial, like seeing where the need is compared to the ask? I ask this because I know Shelter Services was gifted five million dollars. Uh, which was a blessing. Um, but you know, there's other agencies up here that could use the support that aren't receiving a five million dollar, which is half a million dollar every month or every year for the next five years. Like, how, how did that um process go?
So United Way does cover a lot of agencies. You know, they, they cover I sent Greg a note on this earlier. I didn't write it down. Um, probably twenty five, twenty six agencies throughout the community. So some of those needs are met through our contribution United Way where they can distribute and help agencies. Uh, so we definitely like that partnership with with them. Housing Solutions Northern Zero is one of those that does receive money through United Way. Um, it really comes to our attention as they come to a formal request. To ask for funding for a program or such. Then we vent that through a budget process. Uh, we are making great strides uh to develop a better way to rank in those applications. The government and her team put a application together that we're close to finalizing. So we can give the first, well, you're looking for funding, let's get your information first. And so we can get that data all upfront and have the conversation uh through a budget process. Do we need to allocate support? Is this a service the city wouldn't provide that we want somebody else providing and those types of conversations? Um, these have just been really longstanding, put in place, a need that we found years ago. And we're just maintaining the current level of service. Thank you, Seager.
But it says that they didn't like Shelter Services, there was no money given last year?
Yeah, these are general fund money. Uh, again, I'm not talking about the grant side.
Right, right. CDVG.
They, yeah, CDVG, those aren't really service partner contracts. Those are funding grants. So forth. This is really for an operational and regulatory service. That's the variation. And we'll talk about shelter service. Greg, we're going to talk about shelter service.
I just, I'm, you know, extra sensitive to, you know, the agencies up here and um I know that Shelter Services town is vastly expanded. So I understand their needs are expanding, but I also know they got that five million dollars. So it's like I want to be equitable in the other um you know, agencies that we have in town that uh struggle.
Well, Greg talked about the back component of things. Do you have another question besides that? He said he's known.
Don't click the answer.
Certainly not. Um, so here's I had some things highlighted in the last break of the little thing. A couple of changes that you'll see on the CADA um, had sent us a formal request to increase their uh funding. Uh, they had been had a funding increase two thousand twelve or so. Um, and they asked for some support and increased operating costs. So they did a formal request, budgeting looked at as a yeah, we can up that contract a little bit. So it was just part of the budget process and seems we have a part to allocate. Uh, the next one I'm going to have Greg speak to.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, High Country Humane, you know, this has uh been the topic of a lot of discussion over the last couple of years, mostly because of the expansion of their services. And uh, uh, the growing capacity out there. But this one is also one that uh is founded upon a three-way uh contract or partnership, if you will, between the nonprofit, the city and the county. The city and county's contributions. Uh, I didn't say donations, they're contributions.
They're what we're funding to be able to deliver service in our.
Yeah, what he said. Are based upon a formula and that formula is based upon the retrieval and uh, uh, accommodation, if you will, of, of the animals, the, the housing of the animals. Where they come from. Uh, so to summarize that succinctly. The city pays its proportion of share for animals that are retrieved within corporate boundaries of the city. County does the same for animals that are retrieved outside of corporate boundaries in the county. Uh. We are that council has been uh, uh, approached by High Country Humane for an increase and that increase was granted and we don't need to revisit that. The question, and this is one where we're going to look for some feedback uh here today, is should it be ongoing? I would like to advocate that it should be. Uh, we saw this uh, increased uh funding last year uh resulted in a new contract that was uh reviewed, drafted, reviewed, reviewed again and reviewed again uh by the, the three parties and it was a very thorough process and it's been several months. Um, so I just want to impress upon council that, that the current agreement is one that has been very well vetted. Uh, the attorneys that have reviewed it and it's good. Uh, and so I think the contract is in place, the funding is in place. We would suggest that it continue. Uh, it will continue with the county. So we want to, I think, keep lockstep with the county uh on the increased funding. So I think I'll park it there and, and let me chat about that or ask any questions. Uh, that one does have uh an escalator for CPI. Um, and I think that's about all I can note on it's other than uh again, we're, we're trying to keep lockstep with the county and I think there's a lot of value to that as well. Certainly value to the service that's being provided through High Country Humane. Questions, comments?
If I can add to that, uh, the contract that we did uh kind of update and amend last year put the city as funding just for that fiscal year for that increase to match the county. So this is where it will have to come back to council. For you to do a, an extension or amend uh that portion that we agreed to. Um, we're going to talk about the extended period too.
How long is the extended period?
So the current first five years of the contract ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Um, so then we have a right to renew for another five year contract. Last year, county took the step to say, we're just going to extend it, we remain seven years back then. Uh, they gave them the seven year, agreed to the extension so that they can help go fundraising and help get that support knowing they have an ongoing resource. The county said, hold on, we want to make sure we're good with the contract. We ask a lot with the contract amendments. Uh, so we kind of did a pause on our portion. But council has the option. Do you want to go ahead and amend? When it would come back with amended contract, do you want us to extend it for the rest of the five years? There'll be six years total uh versus one more year and we'll be back next year asking you for extended. So that's also a talking point and a direction we'd like to get before we come back to possibly in June or so. Thank you.
I would just comment, I'm, I'm very supportive of extending the contract. Um, on top of all the things that they do, especially for the low income um, residents and, and people in the surrounding areas during the fires. And they weren't the only agency, but they were just busting at the seams with a lot of stray animals until their owners could find them and they keep them off the streets and make sure that they didn't get hurt. Um, and they just provide such a great service on those isolated events as well as ongoing. So I'm in strong support of it.
Thank you.
Please. Um, there were a lot of issues that they weren't looking up to their contract. Has those issues been resolved?
We feel they have. Contractually, uh, we have uh performance measures uh embodying in the contract. That's one of the reasons it took a considerable time to negotiate, draft and negotiate and so forth. Uh, I don't want to speak for the police chief, but you, you can give me a nod of the head if you like, chief. Uh, is that a nod of the head or are you let's hear from the police chief on this. Yeah, because he, he and others worked very hard on these performance measures. Thanks, chief.
Yes, so yes, mayor members of council, we continue to meet with them monthly. And we have solved most of our issues. We still see ongoing issues from time to time. But it's mostly related to overcrowding, i.e. they're, they're struggling with being able to house or manage all the animals they have. Uh, they're busting at the seams. They're looking at some options there. But as far as uh issues with them responding to our needs, it's been pretty good.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Thanks, chief.
I'm supportive of saying the mayor, vice mayor's nodding his head. Thank you, Greg. Mayor, did you have a comment? I'm sorry. No.
Okay. I mean, of the heads. Thank you for uh allowing us to solicit this direction. We welcome back with the contract. I think, we all think it's a good idea. So thank you for your, your input. If I can shift to shelter services. I want to back up and uh without putting numbers to it, I think some general statements during COVID with the remarkable increase in need for shelter uh then under emergent circumstances. Uh, and resulting uh uh accommodations that utilize uh some of our uh hotel space in the community, quite successfully in my opinion. Uh, there was a lot of resources then uh being diverted to Flagstaff Shelter Services. And I, I think some other service organizations, uh, the city along with our many partners, uh, really stepped up to the plate to, to help fund. And that was in addition to the CDVG grants and some other revenue sources. That's kind of now in our rearview mirror, but uh Flagstaff Shelter uh has greatly expanded. I think now they are occupying two hotels for transitional housing along with their congregant care facility. Um, they, they have uh been a cornerstone in our community in terms of the service that they provide. They are not the only game in town, but they are certainly the biggest. And I have seen, uh, we have seen requested appropriations on a year to year basis. I don't recall any that have been turned down frankly. I think the city has, has done its part. We feel uh it is time to think about an ongoing contractual arrangement. Uh, and one that is a little bit more commensurate with, with the level of service that they're providing and, and and the volume of service that they're providing. Uh, hence the hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I didn't take notes. Seen a couple of emails uh today. The word is out against ever having this discussion and, and I'm glad it is. I have had conversations with Ross about this. Uh, very similar to the discussion on High Country, what this does for the service provider is it gives them some assurance uh that there's going to be continued funding over a certain period of time. Uh, it enables them to go out and fundraise from other sources. As people can see, not only is the city a contributor, but a consistent contributor and a contractual uh partner in this instance. It's uh probably remarkable that with all the funding that has uh either come from the city or been funneled through the city to uh Flagstaff Shelter that we, we've been operating without a contract per se. Um, it probably is a good idea to have a contract and it kind of formalize what really has been the practice. So I'll, I'll stop there uh and let you uh weigh in on that. But this is coming to you with a recommendation. Again, it would be a contract that would be coming your way. We've been working with procurement and uh, we'll work with legal and get all of our uh items buttoned up on this uh process wise, but before we do that, I think we need to hear from our elected body as to how you feel about this. Yes, council member?
Well, I am very supportive uh for a couple of reasons. One is they provide a good service. The other is that we have rules and regulations ordinance and saying that we can't go camping in the park. You can't park up on Mars. You can't camp on Mars Hill. So if we're going to have that policy, the other side of that same coin is okay, where are these people going to go stay? Uh, so I am very supportive. Uh, but there are other organizations in town and I just wonder if staff has any comments about maybe supporting some of them as well, but I am supportive.
Thank you. And before I go to, was it you, mayor, who had your hand up or council member House? But before we hear from you, council member, uh similar to uh the question about, well, two things that Rick talked about United Way there as an umbrella organization, there's a a lot of funding that goes through United Way to other uh agencies and nonprofits. Uh, council member Matthews raised the question about Habitat, and so I wanted to take the opportunity also to let you know there, there are other kinds of money, not general funding spend. there are other kinds of money, not general spending, where we see allocations go to other nonprofits, especially in the housing realm. And I don't want to speak for others, but you'll be getting updates on that. I believe that is on that list along with others. The CDVG funding, I just recently saw come to council is a very good illustration of that. So yeah, that's probably the quick answer is, you know, depending on the color of money here, there are other resources going to these other agencies. But I don't want to gloss it over. I mean, Flagstaff Shelter is the big one and the one that is probably stands alone and perhaps warrants a contractual arrangement because of everything that they're doing.
Again, I'm supportive.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And thank you for the advice. Council member?
Thank you, supportive as well. And I think just given the extensive amount of work that they've done over the past, what, three years now in terms of supporting the pandemic and growing in the way that they have with the hotel purchases and bringing that new source of housing and community support to Flagstaff. I'd love to see us enter into that sort of a long-term contract with them to really substantiate the partnership that exists between our organizations. And I think it's important to recognize, you know, the difference between some of the grant funding that they've received, which is not for operations, but enables a lot of the work that they're doing with the hotel purchases and funding those efforts. They still have a lot of struggles that they are undertaking very boldly when it comes to operations and being able to keep up with the rising needs for our community. So I think it's really important to see us partner in this way.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
I too am in support for everything that's been stated. And, you know, we've had a similar conversation several times over the past couple of years about the unsheltered. And it continues to be one of the areas that the community is most interested in, whether it's contacting us to, because they don't want to see unsheltered people or people who are feeling very compassionate toward our unsheltered neighbors. And I just, I see this as kind of a foundational service. And also with having a contract, then you've got more, you've got benchmarking and you've got more partnership. And I just think that this service is one that's deserving of that partnership with the city.
Thank you. Yes, please.
And I just want to be clear, you know, I have a special heart for Flagstaff Shelter Services. They do especially serve a population group that no other agency serves and that is critical. My only observation and concern, and I know probably more than most, you know, about at least what everything looked like eight years ago and that payroll is covered by the state and other things. I just wouldn't, I would feel comfortable with that dollar amount of having a better understanding of what that financial picture looks like because there are many agencies in town that struggle. And as the shelter services before Ross got there, struggled year to year to provide valuable services. And I just want to make sure I'm for going into a contractual agreement with them because I think that they provide just a critical service that will never go away. We're not going to ever not have the unsheltered here and so it's very valuable. So my points, and especially with this gift that they did receive, it was like, do they need it today? When, you know, they had this windfall and I don't know the parameters and the story behind that. So I'm not going to pass any conclusion on it. I do think we need to have a contractual agreement with it. I just would like to see a little bit more due diligence on where the need is because I know what other agencies and how other operational services have always been covered. So I just want to make sure we're just not adding unnecessarily to our block.
Indeed, and we're taking note of this perhaps as a parking lot item or we'll just run with it. But we'll get you that data that you're looking for.
Data.
It's not data. Yeah, coming your way. That's a very good question. Thank you, council member.
I don't know which way to go on the D or F, but I, first of all, I am in support of the contract for every year for this amount. The one thing that I do want to say is that there are always going to be unsheltered people. Some of them are not ever going to want to live in a permanent, you know, place for a lot of different reasons. And so that's just going to happen. The one thing that I do like about this is that no matter if the person, whoever they are, they're welcome at the shelter services from what I understand. And everybody needs to have somewhere to go while we're trying to help them deal with whatever issues that they have. And so for that reason, I'm really in support of this. And in terms of what other agencies give them or where they get their money from or whatever, I really don't want to go into those weeds. I do agree that we need to know kind of what it is that they're doing with the $100,000 and that's fine. And I don't think that needs to be a whole big long conversation because I'm not really interested in that. Are we paying for salaries? Are we paying for utilities? Are we paying for whatever? And so that's where I am, you know, just where is it going?
Indeed, yeah. I believe we'll have Flagstaff Shelter present to council probably at the same time as this contract comes before you. And that might be independent of the information you're seeking, but that will come your way as well. So, yes, please.
I'll be brief. I recall speaking along these lines, advocating for something like this over the years and often in the spirit of it. And I'm just incredibly grateful to your responsiveness to all of that.
So this is very collaborative effort. We always listen. Things don't come back to you immediately, but they do come back to you. So thank you for that comment. Council member Sweet, did you have anything to put on this?
I am supportive.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you again for that discussion. The last one, I asked Rick if he could include this bullet. Thank you for doing so. This is unfunded. This is small enough and I think if council desires that moving forward, we'll figure it out financially. But should we consider a 5% escalator CPI adjustment, however we want to phrase it? We have that with the High Country Humane contract. I thought it would be worthy of discussion to consider that with our other contractual arrangements. Or is this all of the arrangements regardless if there's?
All those long-term contracts.
Long-term contracts, okay.
The service provided.
Yeah.
They haven't changed. Some changed slightly since like 2012. So we're like, okay, now that we're having a contract with High Country Humane as an escalator, doesn't make sense to start looking at funding for our service partners too. So great product, the concept, we priced it over. It's not a big number. But it definitely helps put money into those community services that we want to see.
United Way comes to mind by the ready-made exposure I wanted for. So, but it's not, you know, a financial arrangement in any way. But I don't mind saying, you know, the United Way contract has been relatively flat, not keeping pace with inflation and everything else. Just as a example.
Can you go back to the last slide which showed?
That one, do I understand?
Come on, brother.
Press any buttons, right? Yeah, that gets me trouble.
What, what is that? As a matter of fact, what is that?
Send it to White.
I can't remember the acronym, but I know Rebecca will. That's the after-school program that we partner with FUSD to help fund their after-school program for children.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
Yes. By the way, I believe it's Live Black Experience. We just need to, the, the, okay. Live Black Experience.
Oh, my question was timed too fast. Man, the first title of the whole slide.
All right.
The money's still good.
It was you. And the mobile outreach bus is the CASS program for those who, because that was in front of this council not that long ago. Okay. Other questions?
So you suggested the ones that say zero, those that stay zero. But the ones that have numbers would go up?
This group here.
Okay. Only the ones at the top.
Yeah, the ones we've had a ten-year-plus partnership.
Thank you. Enter.
Next up, we'll hit it up in the board.
I've never been on a project where you'd be the most satisfied. This is efficient.
Especially with Rick talking.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, council, and city sustainability director. Here to discuss the funding that has aligned into the carbon neutrality plan. And let me just get my notes up. So similar to last year, some of the council may be familiar that staff are asked to consider their funding request through the lens of the carbon neutrality goals that the city has adopted. And the benefit of this process is to really advance accountability in terms of our commitments. But it's also an opportunity to really understand the city's investments in carbon neutrality. Because while we have a plan that has a very prescriptive nature to it, there's a lot of things that the city is doing that is aligning with carbon neutrality. So we don't want to reuse that inside of this budget process. And it's an opportunity for us to really focus on education and capacity building, not only with our electeds and our full city staff, but also with the community. So it's really allowing us to say, look, we may not have addressed a specific line item in this manner, but we really are working toward collectively as an organization towards our carbon neutrality goals. So the analysis is done through the budgeting process. So we asked staff to align their budget, new funding requests with the carbon neutrality plan. So we aligned it with every diverted action in the carbon neutrality plan, which is a heavy ask for staff. And so we just really do want to give a shout out to all the staff because we recognize this as an additionality to the work that we've already been doing. So again, that analysis allows us to look with, at rather, how new funding requests are aligning with the new carbon neutrality plan. And then we can actually extract from that data what is really advancing the carbon neutrality plan. So we've got a lot of work with a new organization that aligns directly. And with the carbon neutrality plan, then we also have a lot of work that is significantly advancing the carbon neutrality. Just as a refresher, because I know everyone's missing the honeycomb that we used to use. But our carbon neutrality plan has 15 target areas broken down into neighborhoods, energy consumption and commitments. I'm not going to read through all these, but just for fun, we went ahead and color-coded everything. So we had over 553 touchpoints, if you will, with the new funding requests aligning with the carbon neutrality plan. We gave staff the opportunity to have alignment more than one time. So let's say, I'm just going to use our budget request for weatherization. So it aligned with three goals. We staffed the opportunity to show alignment in more than one area because we know that certain actions can support our kind of action in more than just one way. So this is just breaking it down. We had a lot of focus on our neighborhoods. This is fantastic. A lot of the carbon neutrality plan is really about empowering our community members in addition to being leaders as an organization. So this is the breakdown. Okay, it's really fun. Just wanted to be lively after lunch. But this just shows you really breaking this down that we had the most touchpoints in community resilience. And then breaking down, and next was health and safety, which is really important right now. I think we can all agree. So this is just how we're looking at all the approved budget requests in the recommended budget. Okay, so now, when we break that down to significant advancement in the carbon neutrality plan, the city is keeping over $9 million this fiscal year, if the budget is approved, to advancing carbon neutrality plan. And so, as we talked about earlier, the 4.4 million for the Nearest Coast Energy Conservation Contract, we have $1 million in water right legal fees. This is resiliency. This is building redundancy in our water systems. We define this as resiliency. $850,000 in HUD funding, $200,000 in preseason flood mitigation. These are all really critical elements to community resilience, which is where you see that touchpoint on the previous screen of why we had so many alignments in that space. Additional items that were supported in the proposed budget was water services, transportation planner. We talked a lot about that in the retreat in February and of course in the CIP, really, really important. The housing planet, planet, planner, excuse me, very unique administrative captain, housing and tuition for police academy recruits as well as portable restrooms. These are all really, really critical and important parts of building a resilient community. Are we going to talk more about that HUD funding at some point? Or is that like for administering a, 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 a weekly quickie? And I can get you some details.
And also we have Sarah Darr in the back that we like her.
Two. And Sarah knows everything she does. She's good.
Should Sarah come up?
Oh, come on up, Sarah.
Additional church.
No additional prayers.
So guessing there's CDVG money in that bucket. I know that Nicole's been successful in pursuing a landmark relating to energy efficiency adaptations within existing homes.
Yes.
But is the city funds, the city funds all that? So they have the request for a housing planner, which will assist us in implementing bond funding and tenure housing plan.
So Pauline, could HUD funding be maybe an incorrect adding? Because to me, when I see that, I think that's funding from HUD. He just pulled up the data. So the data that we've received from Resource X is very limited. So let me just pull that up for you. Let's see. It says HUD funding. It was a tighter basis of some inflation. The last kind of file really quick. And for the sake of delay, I can pull this up and get it to you too.
Okay.
Yeah, so the extraction of the data, where staff can enter kind of key information that has limited character spacing. So we'll go ahead and just pull that up for you.
Okay, I'm going to know what that was.
Congressional waters for, I mean, published your code. Let me go pin that down a little more because that number is going to be a conglomerational.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
And thanks.
Yeah, this is a perfect example of how much intersection there is across the organization though to advance the carbon neutrality plan.
Well, I mean, key in on the word you said, intersecting. You know, climate denier people might go, my God, they're spending $9 million. Well, even if you don't believe in climate change, I'm not one of those people, as you know. But a lot of these things we're going to do anyway.
Exactly. So a lot of the work that the city's doing, again, is already aligning with the goals that the city has set.
So if we change, if no climate change, we're going to do a lot of these things because they just make sense. But they do improve the climate change goals.
And our carbon neutrality plan is a prescriptive pathway. And our carbon neutrality plan is a prescriptive pathway to really target those areas that we know need focus and laser point focus to reduce emissions.
Thank you.
And here comes Sarah. Sarah, thank you so much.
Answers in the room.
The answers in the room. So this particular one, that eight hundred and fifty thousand is our anticipated increase this year related to housing assistance payments for voucher holders for our Section Eight VASH mainstream emergency housing vouchers. So that is the increase from HUD that we are receiving strictly in that category. So it does not include CDPG, it does not include other items. That is money that goes directly into the community to landlords on behalf of low-income residents, allowing them to live within market rate.
So it's eventually passed through.
If we administer it, it comes, we have to do all the eligibility, et cetera. Then yes, it goes. So reminders voucher programs, household, public households pays thirty percent of their adjusted income towards the rent. The remainder of that rent is made up by. So it's a formulaic adjustment published by HUD related to our fair market rent amounts.
And what I just started to have about last week.
Yes, thank you.
I said, though, advance the CMP to HUD voucher program. Because we are talking about health and safety and community resilience and equitable systems. So we want to ensure that we have housing for all. And that is a very hard part of.
It's our energy for our own.
Equitable systems and resilience. We want to ensure that our community members have access to fair housing. I agree on that. I just didn't, I didn't see how. Yeah, so I, and I think that this is a great opportunity. Sorry, Katie, I told you seven minutes.
You know, we only are two hours ahead.
I know. But, you know, when you talk about that umbrella, we know that and data importantly supports this, that our individuals who are in lower socioeconomic tiers are impacted faster. And so that's why it's such an important element of our carbon neutrality discussion is to talk about that and talk about equity and housing and healthcare and access to the same services that individual, all individuals in our community should experience. So it's really this embracing of data and community needs.
I'm so sorry, but if you go back to the other or forward to, yeah. I think I'm still confused on that eight fifty under HUD funding. Because are these all requests? And that is funding that we receive?
So this is wonderful. So, no. It's not a request that we make. Because our monies for the Housing Authority come directly from HUD based on congressional appropriations and formulaic distribution, that money is the additional money we anticipate receiving related only to our housing assistance payments, not related to our capital fund for maintaining our public housing, et cetera. Here's the really fun part about my job and budgeting is that the federal government budgets these monies on a calendar year basis. We budget on a fiscal year basis. And as we watch our Congress every year struggle with getting a budget done in advance on January one, we can be four, five, six months into a calendar year before we actually know what our real ones are. So we pay attention to our industry publications, to information flowing out of HUD, to use an approximate percentage increase that we anticipate based on trends. But we can literally be in April of a year we budgeted for in the previous April before we find out exactly what those funds are. And you have to give kudos to our finance folks. We're usually under ten thousand dollars off based on watching trends and percentages.
So is this funding, thank you for that explanation. So is this funding here saying that that is earmarked for the HUD funds that we'll receive, but then the HUD, when we get the HUD funds, it'll pay that off? Or is it more accurate to say maybe that number shouldn't be there? That's, that's what's confusing me is why it's under our quest if it's money that we.
It came through, yeah, in the budget line items that subtracted.
When we are relating to relationships within carbon neutrality, I don't think this is maybe the only thing related to it with it. I think it's an example of where we have funds coming into the city that are related to our key community priorities. And this bucket of money for the specific purposes related to the key community priority for livable communities and then associated to carbon neutrality because carbon neutrality also talks about. And this is one way we're able to use funding from another source to talk about providing housing.
I think it might be the wording that is HUD funding.
Yeah. But I understand, I just, I just. I understand now, but the wording threw me.
And I can park my question. I'm going to get hung up on this. I think maybe I'm misunderstanding what all those numbers are there for, but I'll circle back on it. It doesn't have to be answered right now. Don't try and explain it all to me.
We only have two hours ahead, so I'm not sure we got time for that.
So are these all funds that are coming in? Is that?
So, let me, maybe I can help bridge that gap. Not say in front of you. We have to appropriate to spend these funds. So while we've got this revenue source that's untidable, it starts coming from federal government, we have to have the ability and appropriation of budget authority passed by council to actually spend and then get reimbursed the funds. So this is the spending side, making sure we've got budget obligations, budget appropriations to deliver the program. The other side's on the revenue side. It comes, we spend it and then we get reimbursed after the fact generally for a lot of our grant funding. So is that explaining why this is a budget conversation versus the funding source of revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
I got it.
Thanks so much. Yeah, what he said. But we're just seeing out of the city manager's proposed recommended budget, nine point three million of that is directly advancing our carbon neutrality.
Don't lose the picture there, people.
So I just want to make a common or question or observation like, I see we're preseason flood mitigation because it's part of carbon neutrality because the adaptation to climate change is probably my most important thing that I. I too struggle with HUD and I, and I have read the CMP a couple of times and some of the changes. But it, I, it feels like the CMP is, its arms are reaching out over other things so that it can be all now included in that conversation of CMP when it started out to just be about climate change. And now it's about housing for all, which is critical, but doesn't change by change. So you hear, I, I'm just, I'm, I think that's why I'm confused with HUD funding being.
Kind of integral to that.
Yeah.
Absolutely fair. And when we initiated the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which was formally adopted in two thousand and eight.
I agree with you.
Thank you. The synopsis for reason, it's, it's a heavy read, I recognize. Which is very mitigation focused. And, you know, at that time, we worked with over a thousand community members to help develop the framework of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The equity element, adaptation, is adapting to the changing conditions as a result. And in that space, we know, and again systematically, that individuals that are in the lower socioeconomic tier are hit harder and faster by climatic impacts. And the importance of having that equity and adaptation is in our planning. And we want to keep that in our future of as we move forward with mitigation. We just don't want to focus only on reducing greenhouse gas emissions because there's so many other elements that tie into that. And if we don't look at the well-being of our community and the health of all of our community and ensuring that, and again, there's, there's a lot of data to back this up. But individuals in the lower socioeconomic tier don't often experience the same resources to battle climate change as those who are in higher economic tiers. What we're trying to do is ensure that that doesn't happen.
So would it be, would it be helpful if we said, we're trying to get to carbon neutrality? See, whatever, you know what I'm saying? And a person who probably lives on a very fixed income, like social security or whatever, they may not have the resources to buy the kinds of things that will help with neutrality. So they're not going to buy any electric furnace because they don't have those funds. They're not going to buy any car. We probably don't need to put that in there, but the furnace would be better. They probably don't have the resources to, I don't know, do some other things, you know, weatherization or whatever. So that's why we're, 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 that's why that's in there.
Exactly.
Is to help those folks, help us or help the whole community to meet those goals.
But HUD, HUD funding is just for the voucher program, not for, we have a grant for infrastructure, what is it, not construction, but for people.
Weatherization. Thank you so much. That's separate. That's separate, yeah. Those money's separate.
Oh, but the point that I'm trying to make, you know, is that poor folks don't have the same kind of resources that some of us have. And it's going to be harder for them to do the stuff that we can automatically do because we have those resources and not just say I.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember, you're, you had it exactly on point. You know, another example that has been used in, in these dialogues are on high particulate matter days and are on days where we are experiencing poor air quality as a result of either forced help treatments or forced fire. And individuals who have to keep their windows closed, who perhaps have respiratory challenges. Our HEPA air filter program, where we give away free air filters, is targeted specifically at individuals who may not have the resources or the money to run an air conditioner or have an air conditioner. And so what we're trying to do is really bridge that gap and, and get a fair answer. Hopefully that helps me to talk more at any point. Or if you're talking.
We'll pull on that box.
Yes.
So again, thank you so much for the lively conversation. Because it is, there's, you know, the, it's kind of tentacles reach out throughout the organization. And what we're trying to really show here is that our organization is working on climate action in so many different ways. And these touchpoints are quite extensive.
So energy is so small.
Yeah. No, in comparison. Yes. Yeah. But keep in mind, that's really, a lot of that is in sustainability. It's wheelhouse. So we have one big program ask. We have, you know, up to three touchpoints. So that kind of makes sense. What this is showing is that this is expanding throughout the community, throughout the organization.
So that energy ask is under CMP and sustainability is different. It has a different ask.
Can you reframe that question?
Well, I'm thinking of energy, I'm thinking of the, than the rest of the contract.
That's it. That's right there. That's one ask. Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, if we actually have every division budget that, that project touches, we have a lot more of this. Yeah, good point. That's all I have.
Well, I, you, whole section. All right, so it sounds like we have Paul and Greg for Capital Improvement Program. Thank you. Aaron.
And remember to be sure to clap and break a stamp.
All right, this is just a quick summary update of the Capital Improvement Program. We did have the Alba Capital Improvement Retreat on April seventh. As you can see in FY twenty-three, we're planning on spending roughly a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. A lot of that, you know, we're trying to be as efficient as possible to get projects done, but we are getting hung up a lot with property acquisitions and, and utility allocations to move forward with projects. So some of that could roll over. In FY twenty-four, we're showing a hundred, almost a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. We have a lot of large projects coming on board. We have the, the Earthleg, the laundry improvements, Downtown Mile, Butler, Butler Drive improvements, or Butler Avenue improvements. So we have a lot of large projects and we're going to see a lot of construction over the next three to five years in the city. Again, we also have a projection for the four years, FY twenty-five through twenty-eight, five hundred and forty-seven million dollars. That's roughly a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars per year. So again, a lot of, a lot of projects planned over the five-year program. You will see in the presentations that some departments like Water Services has, have requested project manager positions. So we're trying to, to get the staff on board to deliver these, to deliver these projects. And then when we develop the Capital Improvement Program, we work really closely with finance. So to make sure the funding sources are there, then we're not going to over the expenditure limits. So again, a lot of the work with the finance department. And happy to answer any questions on a specific project or what you might have.
Is the projected BBB budget lower because we're expecting the economy to slow down?
I do not know the answer to that. We can find out if somebody doesn't know the answer to that as well. So Rebecca, come on up.
I don't think so. This Rick is shaking his head no. I came up here because most of the BBB projects, for capital projects that are in here are PROS-related. I think it has to do with the projects that are planned in each year and whether they'll be carried forward or taken care of in a fiscal year. So for example, this year we're planning nine hundred thousand for a project that you'll be carrying on May sixteenth. That's in the budget for this year, but not as much money is, is programmed for next year that that project may carry forward. It's not appropriate answer.
Right.
Should I do a thing?
Yeah, basically carry over the increase next year.
Yeah.
But it's also.
This is just expenses, not revenues.
Right.
That's where I was. Added.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other, any other questions? The summary. Thank you. Also, a follow-up to our capital retreat, which was great. Just kind of some bullet points here, and most of these are statements of the obvious. But we're embarking upon several years of significant capital projects. The matrix, you just saw, put numbers to that, but, you know, if you're doing some quick math, you know, in excess of three hundred million dollars over this year and next obligated. And then beyond that, the next five years, half a billion dollars obligated, give or take. Lot of obligated expenditures that are in play on our end. And I, I think we're making progress on this, but there's. And I, I think we're making progress on this, but there's, there's always room for improvement. But staff will, we will do our part to bring about as much transparency to these projects as possible. We're having those discussions right now, uh, and it will be more than just presentations to you at the day as council. It's going to be a, a lot of outreach and, uh, covering the spectrum of the outreach, uh, more than just internet postings and website postings, but you know, social media, newsletter, videos, 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 just in case, God, Simone is out there listening. We will, uh, really try to cover the spectrum and do our, our, at times it may even seem like we're just like pounding the drum incessantly, but I, I, you know, our community can never hear often enough just what is going on and how, how it's going to benefit the community, which is the story we want to tell. But of course, getting there is going to create some impact and that timing conveniences, uh, and we will tell that story as well. So we will do our part. We want to make sure council is likewise informed enough, uh, to provide its continued support for these projects. And, and I think all of that is predicated on having good information. Uh, but we see this, we see it all the time. Pick your project and you'll be able to easily recall, you know, how questions can come in from our citizens, uh, you know, on things like design, uh, timing, on impact, all of these things. And it's, it's extremely relevant. Um, and because council serves as the, usually the first point of contact on this, when people have questions or concerns, they're going to email mayor and council. Uh, we see those emails every day and we want to make sure you have the information that you need to be supportive of the projects as you have been. That will become paramount in, in the years ahead. So we, we see this as an all-in effort, uh, a daunting effort, uh, because in addition to just overseeing the projects, managing the projects, which, which is an amazing task in and of itself, we have all the other nuances here to, to be considering, public outreach, public information, uh, of course, watching our budget and, you know, responding to our unity. Um, so there's, there's just a lot that lies ahead. Here, going back to this morning's discussion, the other thing we can add to, to the conversation is we're embarking upon, uh, the, these very, very significant projects at a time when staff capacity is not really, uh, where it should be, although we're making progress. What that means is, you know, we'll be relying a lot on outside help. Let me give some examples to illustrate that point. Uh, in community development, we have a, a real estate program. I don't know if real estate is a section.
Program.
It's a program. Thank you, Dan. Uh, and that program consists of two people. Uh, now you think about all the projects that are in the queue and all the projects that have been happening. Think about all the flood mitigation that is happening, all the property acquisitions that retied any of those things. No, Mayor, you, you have been busy with others on, on the Highway 180, Culver project and the, you know, there's been efforts to acquire additional, uh, parcels so we can do some things out there. All of this happening with, you know, expediency and urgency, um, but it all requires real estate, uh, requires expertise. And you, you can only go so fast when you're talking about the acquisition of real estate. We're doing everything we can, uh, but I gotta tell you, I mean, there's a huge strain right now to, to, on, on our real estate staff of, of two people. And we're doing things internally to try to help address that, uh, utilizing other resources within the organization. And we're going out of house, uh, as well. We are doing everything we can, but with all of these projects, uh, there's, there's going to be a tremendous strain upon staff capacity. We have the expertise, uh, to do this. We just don't have the bodies at the moment, uh, and you know, we'll, we'll try to make as much progress as we can. Uh, but there's an underlying excitement with all of these projects. We, we can't wait to see these happen because they're, they're all going to be so tremendously beneficial for our community. Um, and we're, we're going to have to remind ourselves to, to keep our eyes on the prize, uh, to keep our eyes on what the project will deliver to this community. Rio the Flag Project, when it's completed, will take much of the downtown and south side neighborhoods out of the floodline. You know, how remarkable is that? The flood mitigation on Spruce Wash, uh, over the next three years will greatly mitigate, not eradicate, but greatly mitigate the flood risks in, in both Grandview and Southside Neighborhoods and other neighborhoods, Paradise. Transportation projects, you know, the Lone Tree Overpass, uh, and the Downtown Mile. Um, these are just, they're, they're such wonderful projects that will benefit our community immensely. Uh, we need to be mindful of that because the journey getting there is going to be painful. Uh, and we, but we need to, we need to all go on that journey together and do what we can, uh, to, um, help message these things to our community and again, be as transparent as we can. Uh, any questions on what I just said? Those are just my verbal takeaways from our capital retreat to go along with all the numbers. If we go on to that, did you, do we want to talk about, uh, it's not any capital program. We're going to script here. Okay, we have two hours, so.
There's not time for that.
Somehow we wanted, we lived in this retreat and I'm going to take the opportunity to maybe do it now, uh, even though it might have been in tomorrow's presentation. But there's a couple of things happening here that I know are of interest to council as we talk about staff. Now, we've talked a lot about staffing this morning, you saw the numbers, but I'm going to connect the dots. Um, in transportation, which is a section of our city engineering and capital projects program, we are creating a new program that will be entitled Active Transportation. It will be next to the other program, which is going to be Traffic Engineering. The two will be side by side, but they will be separate in structure with different recordings and different tasks. The Active Transportation Program is the infancy of, of a community mask that's been on the table for some time. And we know that you, council, have been hearing a lot about that. We, we've heard from many of our citizens, many of our advocates for bike and ped infrastructure. Uh, we've heard from our transportation commission. Um, and we have been actually heading in that direction internally because we know there's a lot ahead as we talk about the big shift, BMT, and, uh, enhancing our bike and ped infrastructure and, uh, pursuing our carbon neutrality plan. Right now, we've been doing, you know, a lot, a lot of our, uh, bike and ped stuff has been dealt with, with one individual. Um, that individual will now be overseeing a program. Staff will, right now with this budget, recommended budget, will have, will be three positions. Uh, and we are prior, we're prioritizing a fourth, uh, position, which will remain unfunded at this time, but when funds become available, we'll be back front of you. Those four positions would be three planners and an associate engineer, all under the umbrella of Active Transportation, which will be, uh, devoted entirely to multimodal, active modal transportation, uh, planning and engineering as, as we move forward with, with these, uh, policy shifts, but more importantly, infrastructure, uh, shifts and, and, uh, a rethinking of how we deal with, with transportation, again, working in tandem with traffic engineering. Uh, this is a big thing and we're, it's exciting to talk about it. I'm sorry, we don't have a slide that shows it, uh, but I think the verbal here will, will give you a good enough picture of what that will look like. Uh, but I wanted to share that with you. And then there's one other one we, we can talk about briefly, but before we do, comments, questions, concerns, enthusiasm?
Things like that.
Okay. Very good. Yeah. All of priority-based budgeting is about, as, as you have heard over and over again today, is about aligning with community key priorities. Most of it is, is in budget, but as Nicole just showed you, it goes way beyond, you know, just numbers. It's, it's programs, it's things that we're doing. Um, but in, in that realm, the idea of aligning our internal resources with what the community is wanting to, to see, what the community has prioritized is something that we're always mindful of. That is why we now have a, uh, Public Affairs, uh, division or section. That is why, uh, information technology is a standalone division. That is why PROs is a standalone division, uh, and that is why sustainability is a standalone division. All of these things, uh, we have felt through time are organizational structures that are being responsive to our community and the community is never static, it is always changing. In the same realm of what I just mentioned with respect to Active Transportation, uh, is another thing that you heard about this morning, I want to revisit it real fast, and that's stormwater. If you were listening closely, and we know you all were listening closely, but, uh, we, when Shannon Jones was talking about, uh, funding for stormwater, he referenced, you know, that there would be one new position coming out of one, uh, funding area, and then later on referenced that there would be another two positions. Uh, what we're doing in stormwater is very much like what we're doing with Active Transportation. We are taking it out of, uh, an existing structure and creating a standalone section that will continue to grow, uh, and meet the needs of the community in such an important way. I will share with you that up until now, um, our stormwater program, uh, is consist of, where is, is Shannon still with, I think he had to step out, it consists of two people. Right? I think I'm getting that right. Two people. You think of everything that's going on, it's stormwater, uh, infrastructure and flood mitigation right now, it's absolutely mind-blowing to think that we have two people, uh, internally dealing with that. That, that soon will be five people and that section will continue to grow and grow and grow because no, what the engineers are telling us, uh, repeatedly is, uh, flooding, um, which is directly attributed to wildfires, uh, is, is now something we, we need to live with, we need to be resilient to. It's not going away. Uh, not at all, but we will do our part to mitigate and then, as you learned this morning, to maintain the infrastructure that we are putting into place. So two things I won't even mention, forgive me for being so long-winded, but Active Transportation and our stormwater team are two very important takeaways in terms of how the organization is changing this year. A year ago this time, we were talking about emergency management and we had this idea of putting into place an emergency management section. It now exists. Uh, Stacy BK is our leader and she's building her team and that section is very busy and has been very busy of late. Uh, they hit the ground running because these events just don't take any time out, you know? We're in, uh, the end of April and we've already had flood events this year. So, uh, emergency management was a big discussion a year ago. This year, the discussion is, uh, Active Transportation and Stormwater. And I will conclude with that unless you have any thoughts or comments. Did I take up the entire two hours?
No. Why? Thank you. So I do have some updates to the schedule for today. It is our intention to use, a good use of our time today to relieve some of the agenda for tomorrow. So we are going to break in a moment for Afika and then when we come back, we are going to head into the first section that you see for tomorrow's agenda, which is the key community priorities. So, uh, Shannon, CJ, Dan, Stacy and Rebecca have all agreed to take their content for tomorrow and go ahead and present it, uh, after our break. Uh, with the exception of Heidi Hansen, who has a prior commitment right now. So tomorrow, we'll start with Heidi Hansen's presentation from, uh, that you see in the agenda for tomorrow. And can anyone remember what Afika is and how it's different than a regular break?
Don't talk business.
It's about personal connection rather than business. So, uh, I encourage you to take that 15-minute break and come back specifically at, yes, 1:45 and then we will get started. Thank you. I have another quick let's settle it game. Of course, it's of the utmost importance, a lot of strong opinions about this one. Are you ready? So the question is, does pineapple belong on pizza? Does pineapple belong on pizza? So be prepared to vote, majority wins. Raise your hand if pineapple belongs on pizza. Okay. And then raise your hand if pineapple does not belong on pizza. It looks like it's a split, tomato, tomato, let's pull the whole thing off. Okay, let's get started. And we are going to begin now with Shannon. No, is it? I have Shannon listed first, okay? All right. Thank you for being here, Shannon.
This slide is a depiction of the seven key community priorities, um, that we have previously identified with work with city staff and council. These are high-level overarching community goals. That's how we derive, uh, these seven key community priorities. Um, you see these on a regular basis, not only through these budget presentations, but we always refer to them in our staff summaries, when we're bringing presentations to council during each of your council meetings as well. Um, programs are scored based on their alignment with these key community priorities, which is the section we heard earlier where it was talking about the most aligned, less aligned, and also referred to as portiles. The last slide that you have is a graphic. This is a visualization tool that shows you how the city's base budget is allocated to each key community priority. When you see the darker colors over to the left, that means that it's most aligned. The program is most aligned and those dollars are most aligned with the key community priority. As you see the colors get lighter as they move towards the right of the screen, those are moving towards the less aligned or the lower portile programs. So now we're going to cover each of the key community priorities in more detail. Um, CJ is going to go over the high-performing government next.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm CJ Perry. I'm your IT Director and I'm here to talk about, uh, high-performing governance. Um, I have five slides of, uh, amazing initiatives to, uh, of how we're improving how we work internally. Uh, we know that we serve the community, uh, but a big part of how we serve the community is making sure that we're a lean, lean, community-serving machine. So, um, and to do that, a lot of that is, uh, improving our internal processes and things like that. Now, I have a lot of bullet points. I'm not going to read every single one of them. You all can read and, um, uh, as we kind of go down, I'm going to just kind of talk about some high-level trends, but at the end, if there's anything that you want, I'm going to cover in a little bit more detail, uh, we'll, we'll open it up for that. So when we kind of talk about high-level trends and we talk about high-performing governance, uh, one of the first things is technology. That's one of the reasons why I'm up here. Uh, so a lot of the things that you will see, uh, here are around, you know, using technology to improve efficiency. Um, IT is working on kind of this digital transformation effort to begin a kind of a cultural shift of improving our, uh, processes and reevaluating a lot of our technology. We have a lot of software technology that's 10 to 15 years old. And while I'm sure it was very effective 15 years ago, you know, times change, we need to keep improving and keep updating. you know, times change. We need to keep improving and keep updating, and so we're kind of really looking on, I'm kind of what that looks like going forward. So the trend in a lot of this first slide kind of shows some of that mentality. We've got, the Corps are working on shifting towards more digital workflow and have made some amazing progress on streamlining their processes through technology. Manager Services is also working on implementing a new contract software and time entry system. That time entry system in particular, while it's still kind of in progress, because already today the city many man-hours of time, man-one man-hours of time. So these initiatives truly make our staff more efficient so that we can better serve the community. And you'll see more examples of this trend on subsequent slides. Another trend we're seeing is modifying or improving processes to help our employees. So that's shown well on this slide as we're looking to improve some of our procurement processes. Some of that is with technology, but a lot of it is just streamlining the process itself. Even things like charter updates and other ways to reduce the administrative overhead while also maintaining accountability and transparency. Additionally, pay for performance is a huge overhaul of our annual review system to help our high-performing staff to receive compensation more appropriate to their level of performance. An additional trend is to give, is giving staff the tools they need to do their job well. On this slide, you see things like project management. That's something you don't necessarily see on a day-to-day basis because it's kind of behind the scenes, but it's really crucial to delivering services to our community. Helps our staff stay organized and effective. Even things like the Fleet Management Committee to help prioritize fleet needs. We've done something similar with a Facility Advisory Committee to prioritize facility needs, and we have a technology team to help prioritize technology needs. So what you're seeing is that we're setting up the frameworks and the tools to help our staff be successful. Additionally, these also help ensure that the items that make it to the budget team and then eventually to council for approval have been well vetted by the organization as a true priority. Another trend you'll see is focused on leadership and future planning for a healthy organization. You see some of the recent leadership changes on this slide. You saw on previous slides the discussion around training and professional development, even priority-based budgeting that has a focus on a healthy organization. All of these are ways for the organization, it's a way for us to focus on our internal health. City Manager Clifton has done an incredible job of reorganizing the organization and getting the right leadership in the right positions. Now that we really have kind of, you know, got a lot of these positions filled, we're really kind of moving forward with that emphasis on that healthy organization and being forward-thinking. We obviously still have a ways to go, and I hope council can see the incredible progress your city manager has done to move the city forward. Finally, on this last slide, there's a lot on sustainability. Sustainability is something that permeates every aspect of our organization. One of the specific trends that you can kind of see around here is a focus on getting grants. You see on this slide, which you've also seen on a couple of the previous slides. We've received plenty of grant funding to move forward multiple critical projects. While the results of much of the grant funding are more outward-facing projects, the actual process of getting those grants is a result of a truly high-performing organization. Many of these grants are very competitive, so when they get awarded, it's feedback to council that your city staff are outperforming so many other organizations. So to conclude, Team Flagstaff is working very hard to improve ourselves so that we can serve the community at the highest level. With that, we can move on to a safe and healthy community, but if there's any questions about any of the slides or the specific bullet points, I'd like to pause for a second and offer that up to council.
Right. I'll also hand it over to you, Jay. Good afternoon. Thank you, CJ. Those are some very well-thought-out, prepared comments. I'm going to do a more traditional approach. We'll take you through these slides, safe and healthy community. I guess some overarching themes, you know, we're focusing on safe and healthy infrastructure, I'd say safe and healthy organization, and safe and healthy community, right? So safe and healthy people. What are we doing to help our folks look into Flagstaff? Emergency management, we've talked a lot about this today. You've got a relatively new emergency management team with SDK and Daniel, a lot into that. Schultz Creek Basin and the 180 Culver. I know the Culver has been an ongoing thing, but just really the last few weeks, we've kind of elevated this project. Real estate's mentioned earlier. Proud of St. Bryce. I've been out there, working on the acquisition to do some things to move the Schultz Creek flow away from, you're all very familiar with your care program. Seems very successful for the first year. You get regular updates on that. Scott is making incredible strides to try to update the fleet and maintain equipment. See a lot of investment in that. Code Compliance and Dark Sky, of course, is a program the community development runs. Say, very much part of the culture of Flagstaff, our Dark Skies. We're really proud to work on that and the benefits that come with Dark Skies. CDVG, this is happening right now. We had items on your agenda last month that I think you're going to be approving. Those are expenditures here coming up. Council picked the priorities of what to do with the CDVG funding, so focusing on affordable housing, homelessness, neighborhood remodelization, workforce involvement. The police aid are a critical part of our police force and what they do around the community that continues to be supported. Heidi and CDB, of course. I think Heidi had to step out, but I think earlier should be an update on some of the messaging they've done to try to keep tourism and folks coming to Flagstaff. The lead-in copper rule revisions, I'm thinking this is probably in water surfaces and having to do a valve for our water. Again, making investments in our wastewater collection system to keep them operating in a safe and effective manner. The 24-hour real-time flood alert pages. I think this is an amazing tool that we have for our citizens and the community. I think all of us probably have a website. When it starts to rain, you can monitor the flows right over the flood areas. So again, incredible technology helping us keep the community safe. The second one deals with development engineering, so application of our engineering standards so that we have safe infrastructure, projects that meet all of our codes. Again, it's focusing on safe and healthy community. Then TIAAs. You know just enough about TIAA, right? Just we saw them, but usually they're about this thick, and it's very technical analysis. And again, focusing on what is the infrastructure we need to serve in projects like Flagstaff. I believe the first one is focusing on PROS programs, our parks, recreation, open space, and event division, providing programs to the community to keep people safe and healthy. Say, healthy more than that. The incident management team, again, this was last summer, an incredible effort, both through our volunteer program and just so many people coming together, working on refreshing the sandbags and getting the old ones out. I know many of us participated in that really successfully. And I'd like to thank Ray. This is another one. His leadership was getting a formal volunteer program in place for our employees. That's one of the things that resulted in great success here. And finally, grant. I believe that went through sustainability for air purification events. Again, some really direct systems right into our community. So really wide range of topics there, but that's the end of my slides. Do you have any questions on what we're doing to Flagstaff's safety and happiness? Right. You doing it by my after me or Brad?
Yes, Stacy.
All right. Stacy.
Why, thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Stacy Calvert, Chief of City Clerk. And I'm super excited to present on inclusive and engaged community. This priority really focuses on our interactions with the community, and we have had some really great things happening over the last year. So many so that I have seven slides of examples. I'm certainly not going to read through all of them, but I'd like to just highlight some of them for you. So as you all know, we had a highly successful election this year with two bond measures being passed quite overwhelmingly, so that was really exciting for our community. And we were also able to see a full council even with the writing component. So that was exciting to see and that our public was engaged in those efforts. We were also able to increase our staffing to expand our videography and digital services. We're already seeing the fruits of that expansion with some really neat stuff starting to come out from that program. We also saw an environmental justice government-to-government grant for the regional resilience project, and this focused on those underserved disadvantaged populations. And also, on to the next one, whoops. Our police department was able to advance social equity and justice with a victim notification and survey software, as well as Project Alert in schools. Our regional planning efforts, community engagement, engagement has started, along with some engagements with neighborhoods on their specific plans. And we also saw the 10-year housing plan advancing forward, and an 18-month development plan has been implemented. As you are all aware, and as we all experienced, we had a very unprecedented and long winter this year, and our folks throughout Public Works and PROS really did a great job responding citywide to keep our streets open, our city facilities accessible, and our neighborhoods plowed. A new website's being implemented at the airport that provides real-time flight information and updates. And there is also continued marketing and promotion of the Flagstaff Local Your Actions Matter campaign. Water Services has provided outreach and education programs and has had significant interactions with the community in response to stormwater preparedness and response. You can see some of their other efforts there listed on the screen. Also, during the design and construction of our capital projects, we have seen enhanced feedback reach to provide information, respond to concerns, and gather feedback. And then you, there has also been, whoops, a significant coordination and partnership with outside agencies. As you can see here, there's quite a few listed. I certainly imagine that that is not all of them, certainly not an inclusive list, but it just speaks to the partnerships that we have throughout our community to get some of these very important projects done. There has also been some focused planning efforts to make our parks and trails accessible and inclusive to all that want to use them. There is also some good engagement with the community to also better understand the things that they want to see within their amenities within our parks, as well as programming. We hosted a sustainability leader course that spanned over nine weeks, and this educated people on a myriad of climate action topics. And there has also been some great partnerships with FUSD and NAU to assist in their climate action planning and their climate action goals. So there was a lot of great things. I covered them very quickly, but I think it's really exciting to see the work that's being done. Are there any questions? Well, then I will move it off to our next presenter, Rebecca.
One, Rebecca Sayers. I'm the Park Check Open Space and Events Director. Unlike some of our partners, our title and our vision tells us exactly what we're supposed to do. Too bad Heidi's not in the room because she's always having to explain that economic by talent thing. Okay, I wanted to remind you first about your objectives within sustainable, innovative infrastructure, because my mind immediately goes to infrastructure, meaning utilities, roads, you know, kind of that stuff. But this priority also includes things like long-range planning. It also includes all modes of transportation. So for me personally, those trails, of course, are super important, carbon-neutral energy opportunities, and assisting the social, the community's social infrastructures needs. So you'll see that some of these highlighted projects that we have for you address a lot of those different areas. It's not just the typical things that you might think of. FIRE being one of them, of course. CJ has talked about this, and you've heard about this in other parts of today, today's presentations. But of course, that's very important for improving our connectivity throughout the city for everybody. Similar to Stacy, I'm not going to get all these, but if you want more information, I'm sure there's other people in the room who can give you the details if I cannot. I did want to call out the significant multigoldal freight and highway grant for the downtown mile. I think we all appreciate how incredible that grant is and that project will be for us. And of course, applying for grants is the main way that we can get these huge projects done. So that's incredibly important for us as way to move forward. And then, of course, FIRE is working on updating their mobile data computers for improved response. We have also within PD, you've heard about this earlier today from Dan, the improvements to the computer and dispatch consoles. And a big one for us is replacing city vehicles with electric and hybrid options. We now have an all-electric truck in our Parks Department, which is super exciting. And I think there's even one in Public Works, which is fun to see them going around. And of course, of course, that's set in PD. So we continue to, as these opportunities are available, we continue to invest in them. And I will tell you that availability is, PROS, for example, is still waiting on another truck, and we have no idea when we're going to get it. All right. We also are improving, you've heard about this from Shannon Jones earlier today, this GATA system updates. Extremely important for the work that Water Services is required to do for our community. And then going back to that long-term planning, we're working on making sure that our codes ordinances, engineering standards, and other parts of our city planning processes align with the carbon neutrality plan and the AT&amp;P, the active transportation master plan. This slide is mostly PROS, so I'm going to read every single one of them. Just kidding, but this is where we get a little bit innovative, right? Exciting new project just happening over the last couple of weeks is helping sustainability with the different community garden locations. Since the Isabel affordable housing project is moving forward, there's a community garden there. We're helping them set it up for at least a few years over at the Hal Jensen Recreation Center. So if you see some things going on over at Hal Jensen in the front, that's what's happening. Super exciting. We also are developing our own pollinator plants within PROS so that we can then plant them in our pollinator gardens that support the mayor's monarch pledge. And maintaining our foot trails, of course, is extremely important. Drainage improvements, this goes back to that healthy, well-maintained infrastructure system. You've heard a lot about this, and I'll go into it. Here's some examples. I just have to say, this is our new electric barn. Let it slide. It looks like a, but. And this is one of our pollinator gardens. Note that PROS did follow directions, and we put pictures in.
We like it.
Excuse me. All right. And then wrapping it up, like it seems like with every one of these is the sustainability initiatives. But this Naresco project, you've heard of this a few times, super exciting, getting ready to kick off, as Nicole said, with lighting and weatherization. That includes in all of our facilities, which I'm very excited about. All other facilities have been examined as well. So this is moving forward. As Nicole said earlier, that's a $3 million investment, right? Big money. It's exciting. And then the vehicle charging stations that we've been able to put in across the city, four, you will see here, and I can tell you that they're used all the time, and not just by us. Although we do have an electric vehicle here as well. But that's what I have for you today. We also have the food scrap drop-off program here, which you might have seen when you walked in today. But are there any questions?
For the charging stations, are they monitored? Do you only get a certain amount of time? Can you just leave it? What's, how do you do that?
You can leave it because they're not the pass. You can leave it because, um, they're, they're not the fastest stations. And so for example, to charge, i- if we're having a low battery with our Chevy Bolt, uh, the PROS vehicle that we have here, it can take up to overnight to charge it. So, uh, they're not limited on time. And it is free to the public at least right now. So is that it for today?
It is. Let's give that a round of applause. Takes a special, um, presenter to plan on presenting tomorrow and then be ready to do it right now. So, so thank you for your flexibility. And then, uh, Claire, if you want to do a public comment.
Uh, so let me get back to the first page. All right, item number five, public comment. Mayor, I do not have anybody online, um, nor a person that has indicated they would like to speak. All right, um, public team, any members of the public who, um, weren't ready for public comment because we were so ahead of schedule, we will have it again tomorrow and would welcome comments. So is that it?
Yeah, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Um, for any appreciations that they might want to close the meeting with as far as being able to appreciate the time spent preparing. Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I was just hoping we could open it up to any, uh, appreciations anyone wanted to make. But I also wanted to, uh, appreciate, uh, senior director Clinton for your flexibility, your, uh, your, the way in which you connect authentically with everyone in the room. And the way that you create an environment, uh, where the entire culture I've seen shift at the city of Flagstaff in many profound ways. If someone's lived here for 23 years and were on the street is that, um, the city of Flagstaff is actually a pretty cool place to work and they don't know what I do. So it's cool to hear those kinds of conversations in the grocery store. So I just wanted to share that. I'd say thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll jump in with, uh, some, um, comments of appreciation. Obviously to, uh, all the presenters. And as I mentioned at the very beginning this morning, to those who have been behind the scenes putting all of this together. Uh, it was a little bit more challenging this year because we had the capital project retreat just a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. And, uh, so we had to prepare for this two day retreat in, in that condensed timeframe. Uh, the finance team, and again, uh, Heidi Derry, very, have been at the helm in doing that. Uh, I'm going to back up and just say, you know, we, as, as the vice mayor noted earlier, we, we, you have seen a number of these retreats now. Uh, through the years, um, and the evolution has been wonderful to watch. Uh, I remember three years ago after a retreat, you know, uh, one of the council members at that time, uh, vocalized her concern that she wasn't getting the big picture. She didn't have a roadmap of where all of this was going. It was fragmented and it's some pieces along the way. The budget team and staff as a whole.
Oh, you stand over here so.
Yeah, I have to be on the camera. This, uh, the, thank you, like the front. Budget team and, uh, staff as a whole, I have no idea what I'm about to say now. Responded to that comment, uh, that constructive comment. And, uh, each year have been endeavoring to make this more, not just presentable, but digestible, understandable uh, by the council. And I think we, we've taken big strides in doing that and I, I really like the direction this is going now. Priority based budgeting a few years ago was something we had to describe over and over again. It was too nebulous for us to get our heads around and, and, you know, with assistance from people like Chris Rhodey and, and others who have really become experts in this. And I want to remind us all, priority based budgeting is not a thing that is out there. Uh, that is being utilized with great frequency. It is still a, a new concept, a new approach to budgeting. Uh, departing from the, the days of big spreadsheets and line item appropriations. Sorry to say that every chatter, uh, and going more into the realm of community priorities and resource allocation. And, uh, that has been fascinating to, to watch, uh, this evolution. Uh, so, so my thanks goes to all who have been involved in, in this. These retreats have become more and more successful because of the, the reasons I just mentioned. I want to also impress upon council, um, how impassioned staff is in preparing for, uh, these, these, uh, retreats and all the presentations. There is such a deep rooted enthusiasm and, you know, um, a desire to, uh, to present well to you. Uh, and we know that it's not just you. These are live streamed and, you know, it's, it's recorded and going out to, to the community, but really it's, it's to you, council and, uh, staff just works so hard to, to put all this together. So, uh, I'm going to ask that we all recognize the good work of staff putting this together.
The key community priorities, while I had heard about them, I had never really seen all the things being there uh, other than websites, whatever. So I'm just wondering if it would be possible for us to really let our community know what those community, uh, priorities are. Is there some kind of, I was looking for Heidi when I started talking about letting people know things. Um, but letting people know, you know, in a big way. Because I think it would be helpful for, you know, a lot of questions and stuff that people might have. But here are community priorities and this is how we got there. And whether that, because I would like to take that list and mount it on the Murdoch Center wall. So that as people come in, they, oh, those are the Flagstaff community priorities. Because most people, I can guarantee you that if you knock on a few doors, not that you would, uh, but people, when you say, what are community priorities? They would know what you're talking about. So anyway, you're here to answer that question.
The, uh, uh, Mayor, thank you, Councilor as well. Um, yeah, so the, the community priorities were created in 2020, um, during the height of pandemic. So we did not have the opportunity and it was before I was in the city, but the city at the time didn't have an opportunity to go out and do that major effort. Um, the very last item on the agenda for tomorrow is going to be this item specifically. We're going to be revisiting those objectives and priorities of, of, so. This year to revitalize, revitalize whether they're still appropriate for the community, what kind of revision we can make. That will involve a massive outreach effort, um, and, and it's, we're going to get some feedback from you all and how you'd like us to go about that and what you want to see in that process. So stay tuned, uh, it's tomorrow, we'll be talking just about what your recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to express my appreciation for staff that's here presenting and here listening. And the budget team, this is our, uh, city manager, you said our fifth day for council.
Been tomorrow. Yes.
Long action info packed meetings, but it's a fraction of what the budget team has done to prepare for this. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you all. I mean, the budget is critical, uh, to our success and moving forward and reaching our goals. And I just want to express how much I appreciate each and every one of you and your contribution either directly or indirectly. So thank you.
I too want to express my gratitude. I've sat there a few weeks now and they are better and better each time. And I, I know it's a lot of work, a lot of time and I appreciate the effort in walking us through, making it some easy parts. Make it easier, reasonably.
Yes, please. Council member house.
Yeah, I just want to add to that and the appreciation to the staff, you know, the fact that you made this information so digestible that we were able to get two hours ahead of schedule. That is amazing. Uh, but also just the, the amount of care that you put into explaining this in a way that, that really could profit well and is easily digestible. Not just by us on council, but for anybody in the community that may be listening to this as well. I think it, it really speaks to, um, the quality and care that, that staff puts into their work. Uh, that they're able to do that and break all this down in ways that are so easy to understand. Um, the other shout out I want to give today is to the city manager. I think we've heard so many, uh, praises of your efforts in terms of, uh, staff care and, uh, just improving things, not only for the city as a whole, but also for the staff members that make it all happen. And I think it speaks volumes to the number of times that, that we heard that raised today. So that's really, really meaningful. And then lastly, just to the community, I think it's amazing to see the level of community engagement. Um, from citizens that come physically to the meetings, to those that may be watching online. Um, just the level of engagement and attention that they are paying, whether they're speaking to us or emailing us, uh, on these topics that are important to them and not just for their own self-interest, but because of the care that they have for our community overall. I think it speaks again, volumes just to, um, what a community we have here in Flagstaff. And that's just really significant. So I just want to give that shout out to our citizens as well.
Anything else, council? Um, I thank you as well. You, you all put it. I can't even imagine the number of hours that you put into bringing this to us. And I'd also like to thank council for your level of engagement, um, and thoughts and deliberation. I, I think that this is a great, um, relationship and partnership between council and staff in, in forging ahead for the, the next few years. So thanks for caring so much.
And we should thank Katie.
Yes, thank you for making us two hours.
I don't think that was my joke, Katie. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure to prep some more budget jokes for you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, I have an announcement. Well, Sunday is Ms. Cleo's tea party and we want to get the building all spruced up and looking pretty. So anybody that wants to come up with stewed that, we're there tonight and tomorrow. So come over and hang out. Maybe I'll feed you. So, but anyway.
That, and.
I have an announcement too, I guess. I just learned that Bill Gates is going to be speaking at commencement for MEU on May 13th.
He's, uh, me in the.
City team. Gates is coming to town.
Mayor, I think, uh, same thing tomorrow with the executive session, but we trimmed some time off of tomorrow. So I think.
So we'll be bright eyed and bushy tails for that. All right, moving on to item number six, we are adjourned.